...that you grant all our citizens peace, prosperity, and well-being in their lives. Please instill in us the necessary integrity, perseverance, and wisdom to achieve an effective and successful budget for the greater good and benefit of the citizens of Spotsylvania County. I ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Where is it?
Thank you for being here tonight. First, we'd like to recognize our soon-to-be county administrator, Mr. Mark Taylor. If you'd like to stand up, please. And also to thank our current county administrator, Mr. Barnes. This is your 45th budget hearing?
No, sir. I think it's 38th, but that's close enough.
38th, 45th. Yeah. Thank you. Well, hang on. Order of business, we're going to go ahead and have people come up and speak, and when you do, please state your name, your address, and you will have three minutes and five minutes if you are with an organization. And the clerk of the board will read the names. And we will start with the budget public hearing.
The first speaker signed up is Eldon James, followed by Grace Marshall.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Eldon James. I serve as a staff of the Rappahannock River Basin Commission. And as Spotsylvania is a founding member of the commission and has contributed its shared funding support to the commission since its inception in fiscal year 1999, that $1,000 contribution has remained constant, 17 budget cycles, not 38, with no requested increase. The commission continues to serve as a forum for the discussion of water resources issues important to citizens of each of the jurisdictions in the basin. The commission brings together 14 of the basin's counties, the city of Fredericksburg, the members of the General Assembly, key regional, state, and federal agencies to engage in policy and implementation discussions that are not offered elsewhere. In the coming year, the commission will be providing important input to the members of the General Assembly in their plans to consider rewrites to the erosion and sediment control, Stormwater Management, and Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act statutes of the Code of Virginia. We will also hold our eighth basin-wide summit to continue to explore cost-effective strategies for addressing the Chesapeake Bay TMDL. We would hope that you would continue your shared funding support as you have the past 17 years. Thank you very much.
Grace Marshall, followed by Ann Klockner.
Good evening. My name is Grace Marshall. I'm the Community Integration Coordinator for the Disability Resource Center in Fredericksburg, Virginia. Most of you are aware of the Disability Resource Center, but for those of you who are not, we are a nonprofit operating in Fredericksburg, serving Planning District 16. We provide core services such as independent living skills training, peer counseling, advocacy of various types, as well as information and referral to anyone with a disability across all age groups. So we serve quite a number of individuals in all of the counties. What I wanted to do this evening is highlight some of the other services that we provide in addition to the core services. We have what, a program that is called the Equipment Connection, where we take gently-used equipment that is donated by the community. We refurbish, repair that equipment, and send it back out to the community for individuals with disabilities who have no insurance or have insurance, but that insurance does not cover durable medical equipment. We also provide youth services, providing advocacy to families who need services for children with disabilities. We provide personal attendant facilitation services, working closely with the local Department of Social Services in the area. We provide many workshops, including social security trainings and filings for the general public, as well as the individual consumers that we serve. We served well over 2,000 individuals last year with direct services, and 479 of those individuals came directly from Spotsylvania County. We also provided 1,444 pieces of durable medical equipment last year, and of that, over 400 pieces of that equipment were given in Spotsylvania County. So we thank you for the time that you've given us to speak tonight. We appreciate the funding that you've provided in the past and that you continue to see your way to realize how important these services are to Spotsylvania County. Thank you.
Ann Klockner, followed by Lee Wade.
Good evening. My name is Ann Klockner. I'm the Executive Director at Rappahannock Legal Services, which serves Spotsylvania County for the last 42 years. I really appreciate and sincerely thank you for the support you've been giving us through the years, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We're asking for level funding. The number of clients who need our services has increased while donations have decreased, all due to the difficult economy. We understand all too well the tough times that are currently tightening all county budgets. Our two full-time attorneys and one part-time attorney cover five counties and 15 courts within those counties. We represent low-income people who need an attorney in civil legal matters like domestic violence protective orders, unemployment benefits, landlord-tenant, and foreclosure matters. We're the only agency providing this service, and in your county, there are 10,726 eligible low-income persons who would qualify for our services. In our 17-county region, that is the highest number of poor people in any county. As an outside agency, we behave like an inside agency by helping county governments in two important ways. First, we take the strain off your social services safety net by lifting clients out of poverty with enforceable court orders of child and spousal support, as well as unemployment benefits that the clients would not have otherwise won without our legal intervention. We help the county also with its court system by helping it run efficiently, by helping those who can't afford an attorney. Pro se litigants, those who come into court without a lawyer, slow the system down considerably, so our assistance does help move the docket more quickly. We leverage your support to provide legal services that benefit your citizens. In the last fiscal year, 563 of your residents were assisted by our three attorneys, including several critical domestic violence cases. We obtained $139,000 in annualized child and spousal support and avoided $436,000 in unlawful fees, fines, and debts. When you total the amount of real measurable financial help we give the residents of your county compared to the amount you give us, that's an excellent return on your investment. Your county's poor citizens received more than $576,000 in enforceable court orders and avoided additional costs in false claims against them, all with our help. In the last fiscal year, the three offices of our agency obtained over $2 million for our clients throughout the 17 counties that we serve with just five lawyers. I have brochures with me tonight, and I will give them to you so that you can provide good constituent services by referring appropriate residents of this county to our office. Again, I want to sincerely thank you for your role in achieving the American ideal of justice for all. It was pretty sneaky of me, wasn't it, to get you all to say my mission statement when you started tonight, because you said the Pledge of Allegiance. And the last three words of the Pledge of Allegiance are what we're all about: justice for all. And when you put us in your budget every year, that's exactly what you're doing. Thank you.
Lee Wade, followed by Teresa Bowers.
My name is Lee Wade, and I'm Executive Director for the Rappahannock Area Agency on Aging. I want to thank you all for the many years of support that you've given to the agency. It is our mission to help our elder adults stay in their communities as long as possible and maintain a healthy and independent lifestyle so that they can become engaged in the community. Demand for our services are strong in Spotsylvania County and throughout the entire Planning District. In fact, during 2014, the agency provided over 37,850 units of service directly to the residents of Spotsylvania County. Our vehicles covered more than 96,000 miles during the past year, and that's taking folks to the doctor's office, it could be taking them to the grocery store, it could be taking them to our cafes so that they can enjoy a meal and fellowship with their peers. We have seen 150% increase in the number of requests that have come through our agency, specifically for Spotsylvania. Another challenge facing our agency has to do with the need to increase services for our individuals. I've been with the agency since 2013, and the problem that I faced when I started there was that we had over 1,000 people waiting to be assessed for services. And since I've got there, not only have we needed to continue providing services to all the folks that had been receiving services, but we're seeing more and more people that are requiring our assistance every day. We are reaching out to many of these individuals and getting them assessed so that we can start those services as quickly as possible. But regardless of what we're able to do, there's still a huge challenge for us ahead. It's going to take your support of our agency so that we can continue to meet the growing demands, not only of those folks that already are waiting to be assessed, but for the many folks that continue to call in. So thank you so much for your ongoing support and for our request for the funds that we requested of $31,886. Thank you so much.
Teresa Bowers, followed by Georgie Lox.
Good evening, Supervisors and County Administration. My name is Teresa Bowers, and I'm the Director of the Senior Visitors Program, which serves Planning District 16. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening on behalf of the 101 senior clients who are in our program as of March 1st. The clients that we serve are senior citizens, most of whom still live in their own homes. They are often homebound due to a physical disability or a visual deficit. They are socially isolated, and many have lost the connection to their local community. The Senior Visitors Program provides a trained volunteer who makes a free, weekly, in-home visit for socialization and support services. We are happy to report that approximately 45% of our clients are Spotsylvania County residents. In case you're not familiar with the Senior Visitors Program, I wanted to give you a profile of a typical client. Pauline lives alone and does not have any family living locally. Her cancer and subsequent treatments have taken a lot out of her physically. Her volunteer helps her get to the store for the things that she needs and get out of her small apartment for an outing each week. They socialize the whole time, laughing and talking and telling stories and catching up on what's happening with each other and in the community. Pauline's quality of life in Spotsylvania County is indeed improved. Many of our senior clients who lack this type of family support and social support rely on their free senior visitor volunteer, whether that's for someone to talk to, and maybe that's the only person that sees them in that week, or for help getting their groceries, getting to doctor's appointments, picking up medications, or hearing aid batteries. This program supports the senior and the local economy in Spotsylvania. We all know that the senior population is growing, and we are seeing that in Spotsylvania County. Yet, there are limited services in our area for this age group. Senior Visitors is the only free program in this community, providing individualized, weekly, in-home visits and assistance to alleviate loneliness and social isolation for older adults, known predictors of clinical depression and risk of suicide. The program reaches seniors not currently receiving any services, as well as provides an adjunct to those served by agencies such as the Department of Social Services and the Agency on Aging, which you just heard from, rather than duplicating or overlapping services, and at a significant cost savings to Spotsylvania County. We value the partnership that we have with Gail Crooks and the staff at the Department of Social Services, and we refer to each other often and collaborate often. The Senior Visitors Program volunteers fill critical voids in community infrastructure at a time of fiscal constraint. We serve the most vulnerable while requiring fewer county resources to help them maintain independence and stay in their own home, a goal that most of us have today. Often with the assistance provided by our volunteers, the senior's entry into local government services is delayed or avoided altogether. We receive no state or federal funding, no fees are charged to our seniors, and no services are billed for reimbursement. I can't emphasize enough the impact that this program has on the lives of seniors who were very lonely and felt disconnected with their community before enrolling in the Senior Visitors Program. Many, like Pauline, report that they have a new friend. They love getting out of their house again. They feel cared for and valued. They are enjoying a better quality of life in their own community. We are grateful for your proposed funding for the Senior Visitors Program, and it is making a difference every day in the lives of Spotsylvania County seniors. You are making a wise investment, and again, on behalf of the Spotsylvania County seniors that you represent and that we serve, they thank you very much. Thank you.
Georgie Lox, followed by Victoria Levi.
I'm Georgia Lox, and I live in the Chancellor District. And I'm here this evening to speak on the matter of school funding. I'm pleased with the education my three children received in Spotsylvania's public schools. It enabled them to excel at top universities, and I consider it vital that our county maintain the same superb standards of education that my children enjoyed. I'm speaking tonight as a property owner, and I can think of nothing that more directly and immediately affects property values than the reputation of our school system. When my husband left, completed his military career and transitioned into civilian life over 12 years ago, we chose Spotsylvania County because of the schools. Today, every community in this county has a distressingly large number of homes on the market, many at giveaway prices, and many have been on the market for a year or more. I can assure you, no other single factor has a greater weight for families deciding where to buy a home than schools. This board has repeatedly stated that attracting businesses and expanding the tax base are important priorities. A strong school system has to be a foundation for any effort to create a significant business investment in Spotsylvania County. What major organization wants to tell its employees that has selected a site at which they must send their children to less-than-stellar schools? Strong schools attract businesses and professionals, creating jobs and a robust tax base. To compete well for the top-level new residents and jobs that we want, we must preserve the superb educational opportunities that marked our schools for the past 20 years. Attracting and retaining highly-qualified teachers is an important part of that, and we must equip them for the job that we want them to accomplish. Our school board was elected to do that, but they must be provided the necessary resources to accomplish their job, and that is what you were elected to do. And I would not presume to tell you how to do your job, but I will urge you to do it, and please accept the school's budget as presented. Thank you.
Victoria Levi.
I'm Victoria Levi. I'm also representing the Battlefield School District. I have two daughters in Battlefield Elementary School. Seems a little like déjà vu, because I was just here a year ago, encouraging you to, in fact, support the superintendent's school budget as-is. And again, I'd like to tell you why. You may remember, my daughter was diagnosed with a brain tumor in 2006. While most two-year-olds at the time were going to preschool or at home, learning their alphabet, learning to speak letters, sound out letters, make words, my daughter was learning to push an IV pole around the VCU Medical Center. She was learning to play doctor with real stethoscopes, blue gloves, and syringes. It was a horrible year for us, but she survived it. She's Supergirl. We put more chemotherapy into that small, little body than most adults get, and we knew the risks when we did it, that there would be long-term side effects, processing issues, and academic deficiencies. What we didn't realize, as she entered preschool at the age of four, was that because she had spent so much time during those critical years in the hospital, it was actually her speech articulation that was the most at risk. We could understand her. We had been around her all the time. Friends could understand her. The teachers could not. We were quickly able to get her services within the Spotsylvania County school system, and the bus would come to the Hazelwild Preschool and pick her up once a week and take her for speech services. She's 10 now and in the fourth grade. She's had speech for six years, and I am happy to tell you that we are actually graduating her from the IEP speech program this year. She has reached all of her goals, all of her milestones, and not one of her teachers has any problems understanding this child that at the age of four, nobody could understand a word. She is also graduating out of her IEP because she does not need very much academic support, which again, given the amount of chemo we threw at her, is a small miracle. But I call that miracle Battlefield Elementary School teachers, and the support, staff, the speech teachers, the special ed, the ones that took her from a child that could not read in first and second grade to now reading at grade level or above, passed all of her SOLs, scoring even a 500 on the social studies, which was strict memorization. She is honor roll on her own, and that is because of those teachers. I strongly, strongly encourage you to support the superintendent's budget. There are 1,000 children that go to the VCU Medical Center under the age of 18 that are treated for cancer. One-third of those children are in the Spotsylvania area. They all need your support. Thank you.
Karen. Karen Taberio, followed by Kathy Holland.
My name is Karen Taberio, and I live in the Battlefield District. I am currently serving as Treasurer for the Spotswood Elementary School PTO. I was a teacher in the county for 10 years and taught one year in King George. I now have two children in Spotswood Elementary and another who will attend in three years. I'm fortunate that my husband has a job that allows me to serve as Treasurer and be very active in the PTO and the schools. I'd like to speak with you about the need to fully fund these county schools' budget. As a PTO Treasurer and former teacher, I'm in a unique position to know the funding needs of our schools and how funding can be used effectively to further the education needs of the children. The money goes to retaining quality teachers who are paramount to the success of our children. We need upgraded equipment for schools. In an age when technological leaps occur at an ever-changing pace, it's necessary for the school system to keep up with the cutting edge, and the money is going towards the safety of our children. If you truly value the quality of life in this area, one of the foundational elements to this is strong public education. Good schools make good citizens, and good citizens make good communities. That is why I'm here today to advocate and ask for you to fully support funding the Spotsylvania County Schools budget. Thank you.
Kathy Holland, followed by Joe Burry.
Hi. My name is Kathy Holland. I reside at 13100 Hickory Court. I'm a classroom volunteer, a PTA volunteer, a substitute teacher, and a great-grandmother of a young knight at Chancellor Elementary and a grandmother of a young student at Nye River. I'm encouraging you, the Board of Supervisors, to fully fund the school budget, covering the small gap that would only equal an additional 1% of your budget. We really do need this to keep the education with our children in this county, because we have wonderful teachers, wonderful students, and I'd like to keep it that way.
I'm Patrick Holland, Kathy's better half. I also live at 13100 Hickory Court. A grandfather with kids at Chancellor Elementary, as well as at Nye River, and of course, I'm here to encourage you, Board members, to fully support the school board's request for funds, and I'd like to thank you for doing so in the past. Thank you.
Joe Burry, followed by Sylvia Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors. Good evening. My name is Joseph Burry. My family and I, including my wife Carla, reside in Lees Hill South, so I'd like to call out our Lees Hill Supervisor and thank him and each one of you for your service to our community. Thank you very much. I have two children, Joseph and Gabriella. They attend Thornburg Middle School and Lees Hill Elementary. Together, we rise in support of fully funding the superintendent's budget. Our family moved from Springfield to Northern Virginia last year. We really love the Fredericksburg area, and we love the school system. More than that, we love the treatment our children have received from their respective schools, particularly from the two principals at the schools, Mr. Tower at Thornburg Middle School and Ms. Cunningham at Lees Hill Elementary. Now, I hasten to add that while we're required by, I guess, the Supreme Court to provide an education to all students, whether documented or not, I feel this board has responsibility and a duty to taxpayers as well, and the cost of undocumented students ought to be submitted to, by the school system, to this body, since the federal government created the unfunded mandate in the first place. Therefore, I'll just close by saying that I'd like you to fund the superintendent's budget, not use our kids as a political football, but require or ask the school system to provide us with the numbers of undocumented students, the number of special needs undocumented students, to this body. When I registered our children for school last fall, and both of our children were born in Langson, Vietnam, so we brought them here and adopted them as infants, I had to present their original birth certificates. I did that. I don't think it's overly burdensome for schools to obtain that kind of information and to find that number, but I do feel, again, that we should fully fund the school system. Thank you.
Sylvia Williams, followed by Nancy DeJesus.
My name is Sylvia Williams. I reside at 3606 Alberta Drive in the Berkeley District. I am here to take the opportunity to talk to the Board of Supervisors. I sit on the Budget Advisory Committee for several years now. I also am the current president of the PTSO at Mass Aponics High School, and I am a coach at Mass Aponics. The $1.7 million that we came to ask for is vital, extremely vital, not only for the almost 24,000 pupils in this county, but as we grow, we need to support every student, whether it's through ESOL, disabled children, even the homeless children that we have that is rising in Spotsylvania County. I take the great opportunity, and I can attest to you, that I love volunteering and doing charity work, but we need to ensure that we keep our educators here and keep them from leaving to neighboring school systems for better pay and better benefits. Every year, as we begin... Every year, as we begin the school year, we try to find out how many new teachers we have, and that number, shockingly, is growing. I appeal to the Board of Supervisors tonight that the work that we put in on the Budget Advisory Committee is extremely important. We sat there and we come up with one, two, or three priorities. Believe me, there is so much more that this county needs. We need the specialists, we need to hire more staff, we need to make sure we keep classroom sizes to a minimum. Because we also moved here, being both military, I can attest to you, all the housing that's getting approved, being a former Marine and being married to a Marine, we looked out several years out where we were going to retire. We chose Spotsylvania County. And it's not a five-year or 10-year thing, but the need, what we need here to keep us in Spotsylvania County is vital, and that $1.7 million, there is so much more that you can help us with. We have a list, and I cannot tell you how hard we work every single Thursday with Dr. Baker, LaShawn Gaines, going over numbers and figures, how much these teachers and educators pay out of their own pocket so they can help their classrooms. They are seeing a huge shortfall, and that is not something that I look forward to seeing declining in Spotsylvania County. We need to give our children the best education. That's the reason we moved here, and I don't want to see it continue to decline. I thank you for the opportunity to give me a speak tonight, and I hope you will pass the $1.7 million that we've asked. Thank you.
Nancy De Jesus, followed by Beth Hoovler.
Hi, I'm Nancy De Jesus, and I live at 9610 North Royal Crest Court in the Berkeley District. I am here in support of the school board budget. My husband and I have four children at home. One is a future student of Cedar Forest Elementary, two go to Thornburg Middle, and one goes to Massaponics High. I've been a part of the public schools for more than 25 years, the first 14 years of which were teaching, and the rest of them as a volunteer. Well, I am fortunate enough to stay home and raise my children and write curriculum for an education company. So I really love teaching and I really love kids. And I just wanted to let you know that my family feels so fortunate to live in Spotsylvania County and to have access to such top-notch schools. My children are very challenged, regardless of their academic ability. Two of my children are ESOL, one of them needing much more help than the other. The teachers and administrators at her school have absolutely gone above and beyond to help my child with her academic language, which is lacking. They work with her during study hall, and after school, they tutor her on their own time. And I'm just very thankful for their personal involvement. They've been like her guardian angels. And because of them, my child loves school and has developed a really great work ethic, which didn't exist before Spotsylvania County. So I'm just, I am exceedingly grateful to that. Another one of my children is identified as gifted, and I've seen firsthand how the gifted department, the administration, and the teachers work together to create lessons to build my child's higher-level thinking skills. This is often an area that is underfunded because people think, well, they're so smart, they are fine. But they're not, they need to be challenged, and she is. The teachers and administrators go above and beyond just classroom work to sponsor clubs like STEM Clubs and organizations like Destination and Imagination. My child's Destination Imagination team last year made it all the way to the global finals. And she was surrounded by students from all over the world with an equal interest in science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And her team this year is getting ready to compete at the state level this Saturday. So I just can't say enough good things about the teachers and administrators at Spotsylvania County, and I really urge you to fully fund this year's school board budget. Thank you.
Beth Hoovler, followed by Peg Phillips.
Good evening. My name is Beth Hoovler, and I live at 10612 Edinburgh Drive as part of the Battlefield District. Thank you so much for providing me the opportunity tonight to speak my heart with you. I'm a teacher at Cortland Elementary School, and I'm so thankful and blessed to be part of this Spotsylvania County School District. And I'm here to completely encourage you to support the school budget. I have a child who also attends Cortland Elementary School, and we have been very pleased with her education and are so blessed to be in this county. There is nothing more important than our children's education. Our children are our hope for the future, and I just want to strongly encourage you to please, please fully support the school division budget. And thank you so much. My daughter would like to say a few words as well, quickly.
Hello. My name is Julia Hoovler, and I'm a 2nd grader at Cortland Elementary School. My education is extremely important. Please fully support the school budget. Thank you.
Peg Phillips, followed by Pam Rodriguez.
Good evening. My name is Peg Phillips, and I live at 11178 Brunswick Place, Fredericksburg, 22407. I am the rehousing navigator for MICA Ecumenical Ministries in downtown Fredericksburg. My primary role within our organization is to provide housing for our homeless guests. I also manage our day shelter, which provides basic needs to our guests as well as identify paths for those guests to stable, affordable housing. MICA celebrates 10 years of existence this April, and since that time, we have reduced chronic homelessness by 58%, and are working very hard to develop a crisis response system that makes homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring. I wish I could give you the updated point-in-time numbers, but those aren't available just yet. I'm here tonight to speak to our ongoing request for the communities we serve. As funding is continually decreased from the federal and state levels, we are left to count on the dollars from our local counties that we serve to help fund our cold weather shelter. The cold weather shelter served 194 people this year with 3,818 bed nights out of a possible 4,995 this year. I promise you, those are the last of the statistics I will give you. I spoke at this very spot a couple of years ago, telling my story as a previously homeless woman. In short, my homelessness spanned a period of five years and was certainly not brief. Back then, funding was available for nights when the temperatures fell below 32 degrees. Thankfully, we are no longer temperature-regulated due to this community's assistance. We oftentimes forget about the basic necessities of life, such as heat and warmth. We who are fortunate to be indoors don't really think about it until we have no heat. The heating and air services are in full swing to restore our power when it is broken or the power has been turned on. We often talk about this year was an especially cold winter based upon the cost of our heating when we get that electric bill in our mailbox. We may even think about that stray cat outside that no one wants to bring in out of the cold, and it's a chillingly cold night, but someone eventually does exactly that. I can say that I am grateful I never have to stay outdoors again because I have to. I am even more grateful that there is a warm place for those that are still struggling with homelessness during those cold months, even if it is temporary. But most importantly, I am thankful to you fine people that make all of that possible and to help our neighbors in need. I thank you for your continued support.
Pam Rodriguez, followed by Kathy Anderson.
Hi, my name is Pam Rodriguez, and I'm here representing Lee Hill District, and I have two daughters that go to Thornburg Middle School. My husband and I are very, very fortunate, and we count ourselves as very lucky to have our children in Spotsylvania County Public Schools and at Thornburg. From the day that we walked in the middle school, the administrators, the teachers were warm and welcoming to not only the kids but also to the parents. They've made sure that the parents stay engaged. I'll give you an example. This year, my kids got involved in a club that it fosters team-building and creative thinking, something that is so needed in our country today with developments happening every single day. Our kids have got to be on the cutting edge of creativity. So for Thornburg to be ahead of that and fostering that by creating teams that help them develop those skills is amazing. The scope teacher that started that program developed, got the kids so enthusiastic, she had an overwhelming number of kids sign up for this club. What was even more surprising was, it's awful difficult to get kids to sign up for things they're not aware of, but how difficult is it to get parents to sign up for two hours a week, every single week from October through March, to give of their time? She ended up, her enthusiasm was so contagious that for one team, for every team that they developed, they had more than one group of coaches. For the particular team that I coached, we had five children, and we have four parental coaches for that team. That's amazing. All of those parents were there for every single meeting and went on to the tournaments to participate there. This teacher has only been at Thornburg for two years. I say that because the Spotsylvania County Schools has the third-lowest salary for new teachers in the state. How we're attracting teachers of this caliber is just amazing to me. But with the advent of the VRE coming to town and housing prices that are hopefully going to increase exponentially, how are we going to continue to attract that kind of talent if we're not paying our teachers competitive salaries, when they can go just north of Quantico and get paid the highest rates in the state? I'm asking you to please support our schools and fund the budget. Thank you.
Kathy Anderson, followed by Doug Albrecht.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Gilatro, and I'm here tonight with Kathy Anderson to speak to you about Empowerhouse. Thank you for your support last year and the ongoing support of Spotsylvania County as an important partner in our work to assist survivors of domestic violence and their children. Empowerhouse has been serving Spotsylvania since 1978 as the Rappahannock Council on Domestic Violence. One of the greatest assets Empowerhouse has in Spotsylvania County is our strong and effective relationship with Spotsylvania County Commonwealth Attorney Bill Neely and his staff, Sheriff Roger Harris and his officers, and DSS Director Gail Crooks and her staff, who we work with frequently. Last year, we assisted over 800 Spotsylvania residents with free and confidential lifesaving services, including safety planning, court advocacy, shelter, housing, children's groups, teen programs, and much more. 102 Spotsylvania County residents received housing supports in the form of shelter or their own housing, which Empowerhouse paid to help the family relocate and get into their own housing. For 47, we paid for their rental deposit and rental housing and provided employment services temporarily until they could sustain on their own. Again, we want to thank you for contributing to make those services happen alongside grant funders, The United Way, and other local contributors. In the coming year, we are asking for an increase to sustain our programs that we will put with our other funding to give the county much, much more. In the coming year, we will be renovating and furnishing a commercial building to relocate and open our new shelter. We need support in order to do this, but far less support than otherwise would be needed because the Sunshine Lady Foundation provided the funds to purchase the building. It's a modern facility with many of the amenities our shelters will need. Doris Buffett's generous gift saves us locally from having to foot the entire bill. With the county's contribution, and one from every locality alongside private donors, we will manage to shelter the increased demand outlined in your booklets and bring dignity to a population that has endured overcrowding and scarce resources over the past 10 years. When the new shelter is open next year, we expect to shelter every victim of domestic violence and their children from Spotsylvania County who requests it. That is 19 Spotsylvania families that we were unable to shelter due to being full over the last five years. In that same period, we were able to shelter 284 Spotsylvania residents, over half of which were children. With domestic violence for safety reasons, we will need to be able to accommodate all the people who request it, not most of the people who request it.
We're in a capital campaign to raise the rest of the funds to relocate, repurpose, and furnish the building, to put it to use. The building is in Spotsylvania County. Contributions are being sought from the community. 100% of our 18-member Powerhouse Board of Directors has pledged and given to this campaign. Five Spotsylvania residents combined have already pledged and given over $100,000 to the new shelter. Our Spotsylvania capital request is $50,000. We are asking each locality for a capital contribution. A similar one was provided to the Regional Moss Free Clinic Build, ending about three years ago. The contribution requested from the county will be 2% of the total cost to buy, refurbish, furnish, and initially operate the new building that will quadruple our shelter space. Our request is that the five localities combined will provide 8% of the cost for opening the new facility. Over 50% of the total cost has already been provided by the Sunshine Lady Foundation. This is a bargain project for our community due to their investment. Our operating request is $49,000 to match another locality's spending and attain the funds necessary for operating the new shelter. Spotsylvania County received the highest level of services compared to our other four localities last year. With cash and pledges at 2/3 of the total we are raising, we can go for financing and start construction as early as next month and finish within six months. We're over 3/4 of the way there. Again, thank you for your support, and at your convenience, please review the package that contains more activities, more information on these activities. In closing, I want to share a few statistics from the people we assist in person, and these are Spotsylvania residents. Has the perpetrator stalked you? 65%. Has he used a weapon or an object as a weapon against you? 45%. Have you, has the perpetrator made threats of suicide or homicide? 76%. Has the perpetrator blocked or obstructed the victim's breathing? Have you sustained physical injuries requiring emergency medical attention? 49%. Missed time from school or work? 79%. Considered suicide?
Good evening. I'm Doug Albrecht, retired Division Chief from Spotsylvania County Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Management, now with my wife Debbie, resident of Allegheny County. But I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of 50-some Spotsylvania County retirees who are concerned about plans to assess them a portion of the insurance premium for their health care coverage. This group of retirees, again this year, ask that consideration be given to their status as some of the earliest full-retirement employees. Employees who accepted the low wages of the 80s and 90s along with the excellent benefits and the assurances of continuing the county's outstanding health insurance premium support into retirement. Some of these assurances are supported in letters and in minutes from past Board of Supervisors meetings. But mostly, back in the day, the assurances were verbal, given and received with a handshake in meetings with employees. The welcome dialogue today with key county personnel and Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield representatives and the county's insurance advisor, consultant, did much to explain the plans and costs. The market conditions the county and insurers are operating under are indeed dynamic, complex, and increasingly costly. But even in this environment, Spotsylvania's early retirees ask that the insurances of the past be honored today. These retirees are the ones who made things happen when funds and resources were scarce. Some were utility workers who responded to midnight water main breaks flooding and freezing over our roadways. Some were deputies who bought their own uniforms, weapons, and ammunition, and who worked security and traffic during high school athletic events without overtime. Some worked round-the-clock to keep water and sewage treatment plants operating efficiently and in compliance with regulations. keep water and sewage treatment plants operating efficiently and in compliance with regulations, even when our infrastructure was at times overwhelmed. Registered trained voting officials voted thousands of citizens in tiny community centers, some with barely two dozen parking places to park, and it was done safely and efficiently as space allowed. Others were parks and recreation, athletic schedulers, and seasonal event coordinators working in cramped spaces, field personnel, field maintenance personnel grappling with weather and equipment issues amid an ever-increasing demand for youth sports, the fields they needed to play on, the grooming that needed to be done. Some were the county's first firefighters and medics who paid for their own training, lodging, and meals out of their own pockets before gradually there were line items to support these costs. There were a lot of amenities like bathrooms and showers that were not available in older facilities. These employees worked through the county's extraordinary growth cycles, accepting conditions and wages because of the excellent benefits the county provided, while the county lost many other employees to better-paying jobs outside the county. They had faith in the assurance, in the assurances that improvements would come, and in retirement, health insurance would continue at little or no cost. A group of your retirees here tonight ask that you give consideration to their understanding that they worked and retired in the belief that their sacrifice, their labors, would include compensation with health insurance premiums for quality plans covered by the county in their retirement years. And thank you very much for your time.
Evelyn Euripides, followed by Michael Euripides.
So I'm obviously Michael Euripides. My wife, apparently there's a social studies exam tomorrow, so she won't be here tonight. I live at 2922 Smithville Court in Spotsylvania County. I have two children at Cedar Forest Elementary School. I have a first grader, young girl, and I have a son who is in fourth grade. He has Down Syndrome. He's been in your program since pre-K and is now on the honor roll in a mainstream class, Ms. Perkins class. He's doing very well. We're very grateful. You guys have guided us through some challenging times economically. I've been on the advisory board to Dr. Baker for the last three, four years, and there's been some very tough times economically, and you guys, as a council, have given us what we needed to do the leadership that's necessary. The reason I'm here tonight is very simple. We just don't have enough resources in the classroom. I'm on many different boards. One of them is with the Richmond Technology Council. By day, I'm an executive in a technology company, and we have, as a business, demands that require technology skills, problem-solving skills, the ability to dive deep into scientific efforts so that they can be productive. And that's where the really great jobs are going. So when I look at Cedar Forest Elementary School, this is a stellar school. It's very well-run, and they've got terrific enthusiasm and great teachers. We just don't have the resources to do all we can with STEM education and STEM activities. We have a lot of volunteers. There's grant money that's available, and we're going after that money with a vengeance. There's businesses that are offering support, sponsorship, for STEM programs at science, technology, education, engineering, and math. The challenge is, we just don't have enough teachers in the classroom to get these little focus groups that allow these kids to dive deep into scientific or math or into something that requires a little bit more thought. And so this budget money that you've got to decide on tonight, what it's really doing is offering us a chance to fulfill those promises that we're making to these kids. It's not just my kids. It's every kid in the neighborhood that we support. So I'm asking you to approve the budget. I'm asking you to give us the money that we need, and I promise you, we're going to take this and do great things with it, including helping our kids to, you know, learn the skills necessary so that they can become productive members of the future. Thank you very much.
Jennifer Stars, followed by Michael Berry.
Good evening, supervisors and county administrators. My name is Jennifer Stars Harding. I live at 10,000 North Harris Farm Road, and that's the Livingston District. I am a proud member of our Spotsylvania community, and I'm an exceptionally proud member to our Cortlandt Elementary School. I happen to be the president of our PTO, and I'm the mother of two small children at the elementary school. I'm here today to, of course, recommend that you vote to fully fund the school budget. As an engaged and an involved Spotsylvania parent, I've seen firsthand just how hard our teachers all work every day to support our children, how much extra time and how much personal funds our teachers put into our children's education. Personal funds in a public school. It's unheard of in New York where I've come from. Our children are our future. They thrive every single day using the academic tools that they're provided with, the experiences that they are offered at our Spotsylvania County Schools. But we know that they need more. Rigor is extremely important to all of us. It's our goal this year, it's our goal every year, to become more rigorous, to have our children be challenged academically and experientially. We, as parents, see this at home. We try to push them as hard as we can. Our schools give them what they hope that they need, but they need more. They need technology. They need science. They need more math. We're very lucky at CES to have a PTO. Some of our schools don't. We have a very small community of very dedicated parents who work tirelessly to help supplement the funds that are coming from the school. We use our funds in the PTO to enhance enriching experiences like funding buses for field trips, support in-class STEM programs. We help add technology to our classrooms. But we know that our resources are tapped. We come to you to make, to ask you to please give what the schools need. Please fully fund our budget. Our demographics have changed, resulting in fewer volunteers. That means fewer PTO dollars to help bridge that gap. PTO money is stretched even further than ever before. We know that we're asking a lot to have the money come from you, but it's important for our students. Our students are our future. Please help them be the very best they can be. Help them have the solid education that they need to be the top students, to be able to go to our universities and be stellar representatives of Spotsylvania County, so that they come back and that they can add to our community again in their adulthood. Our children are our future. Please support our future today by voting to fund our budget.
Michael Berry. Followed by Michelle Hedrick.
Good evening. I'm Michael Berry. I live at 10321 Antietam Court in Fredericksburg in North Lees Hill District. First of all, I want to thank the chairman and the supervisors of Spotsylvania, just for your service. I hope that you consider my words very carefully. I retired from the Marine Corps in 2002, and I've since embarked on a new career. I've been working at Marine Corps Systems Command since 2005, when I moved here to Spotsylvania. My wife and I picked Spotsylvania because it had the lowest tax rate in the area. We felt that the tax base was exactly what we needed, and unfortunately, we bought our house here when the market was up. So our house, we are underwater in our house, and I suffered unemployment from December of 2013 until May of 2014. I find myself commuting up to Washington, DC, starting Monday. I would urge the board to continue keeping our tax base low. My turnover rate in the industry that I've chosen to work in is about 37%. I don't think that the, I don't think that the turnover rate for our fine teachers in this county is quite as high. I think people choose to live here for a reason, and I would like to keep the taxes low. Thank you for your time.
Michelle Hedrick, followed by Javier Rodriguez.
Good evening, honorable lady and gentlemen of the board, county administrator and staff. My name is Michelle Hedrick, and I'm Executive Director of Rappahannock Big Brothers Big Sisters, and I'm a resident of Spotsylvania County, Lees Hill District. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak and for your past support. The Rappahannock Big Brothers Big Sisters Board of Directors, staff, and our volunteer mentors asked the board to approve the proposed funding request of $5,000. We can appreciate that your Department of Social Services Advisory Board decided to recommend the use of your limited resources to meet the needs of your priority target population, at-risk children in Spotsylvania County. By partnering with our organization and utilizing our proven model of one-to-one mentoring, you are able to create community change without adding additional services within the county departments. We welcome the opportunity to help you. Our cost to serve Spotsylvania County children is $72,000. Therefore, the $5,000 in funding is a sound investment for you to consider. The funding for the youth mentoring program is used to recruit, screen, interview, train, and provide ongoing professional to support to children, their guardians and their volunteer mentors. Many children in our county live with a single parent or a guardian, such as a grandmother who is challenged by time, by finances, or by circumstances that they cannot provide the necessary support and engagement in educational, athletic, and civic activities. With your support, Big Brothers Big Sisters matches these children with an adult volunteer who spends time with them each week to help them navigate the challenges, the chaos, and the adversity that they're facing. Our mentors reinforce positive behavior and constructive decision-making. National research has determined that spending time with a big brother or a big sister mentor leads children to improve school attendance, improve their grades, improve behavior, and make better decisions. Our studies show that when mentoring begins with at-risk children ages six to 13, we have the highest success rate. Therefore, the investment the county makes in at-risk children results in more students who succeed in school and then become the contributing citizens that we all need to have them be. It results in better schools for all the other children and the teachers as well. We are a partner agency because we are a partner with the county schools, such as Harrison Elementary, who requested our services this year, so we started a program there. Mentoring helps the children be successful. It's a prevention program that, in the long run, saves the county and its residents money. Thank you for your consideration.
Javier Rodriguez, followed by Edie Evans. We are on numbers 23 and 24. Edie Evans.
Good evening. My name is Edie Gross Evans, and I'm a case manager with Rappahannock Area CASA, a nonprofit organization based right here in Spotsylvania County that provides court-appointed special advocates for children involved in abuse and neglect cases. I'm here because your proposed budget for the coming year would reduce our funding by $5,000. That may not sound like a lot of money in the grand scheme of things, but it's a significant amount of money to us, especially on top of the $5,000 cut Spotsylvania handed us two years ago. Reducing our funding by $5,000 amounts to cutting Spotsylvania's funding for 20 children served by our program. While we serve children throughout the region, as of this moment, 61% of our caseload is here in Spotsylvania County. These aren't simply latchkey kids, or kids who don't have an appropriate coat for winter, or who haven't been to the dentist in a while. These are kids who resort to eating dry pasta out of the cupboard because their parents are so high on heroin or cocaine that they've forgotten to feed them. These are kids forced to sleep outside because mom's in a bad mood, which is sometimes preferable to sleeping inside where mom's sex offender boyfriend has easy access. These are kids who took their first bong hit at nine courtesy of their drug-dealing father. These are preschoolers with PTSD, kids who have been choked, punched, kicked, and oftentimes abandoned by the very people who are supposed to love and protect them. With a staff of exactly 2.6 people, we're a pretty lean operation. We rely largely on a team of well-trained and fiercely dedicated volunteers who forge relationships with these children and fight like hell for them. They interview teachers, therapists, family members, doctors, and other caregivers to gain a clear understanding of what these children have endured and what services they need to put them on a path to healing. We then provide that information to the judges involved in these cases to help them make decisions that benefit these kids. Our CASAs provide a rare level of consistency over the course of a case, which can last for more than a year. Children bounce from foster home to foster home. They change schools. Sometimes, social workers are reassigned, but the CASA stays with that child until the end. Unlike social workers who often juggle very large caseloads and have to focus on the family as a unit, our volunteers generally serve one child or one sibling group at a time, and their focus is very narrow. What is in the best interest of the child? That's it. Our volunteers provided nearly 10,000 hours of service to this region last year at a value of nearly a quarter million dollars, a contribution that far exceeds our actual annual budget. Losing funding undercuts our ability to recruit and train these vital volunteers. A large cut in state funding several years ago meant we had to put kids on a waiting list for a CASA, something we don't ever want to have to do again. We don't have a Director of Development at CASA, so when we lose funding, our tiny staff has to scramble to try to find it somewhere else, which means we're spending less time focused on our core mission, which is helping kids. CASA has a long track record of helping children in this community. Judges routinely note that the reports written by our volunteers are vital sources of information when it comes to making decisions on behalf of these children, and we believe we're a smart investment for this county, that spending a little bit of money upfront to help these children will ultimately save the taxpayers millions in the long run. I recognize that this board is responsible for funding a tremendous number of needs here in Spotsylvania County. CASA would simply ask that serving the county's most vulnerable population, abused and neglected children, be at the top of that list. Please restore our funding to its full $20,000. Thank you.
Frances Reeves. Followed by Helen Parham.
Good evening, board and staff. I stand here before you as a Spotsylvania County resident, first and foremost, and as an advocate for Empower House for additional funding. I am a, I need to watch the clock because I'm a preacher by calling. I'm a teacher by gifting, and I'm compassionate about what I stand before you to speak about tonight based on my experience, my personal experience. I stand before you tonight as a voice for those who've been silenced by domestic violence. I stand before you tonight as a voice for those who are living in fear, who decide that they can't speak, so they will remain silent. I stand before you tonight as someone who is educated with a master's degree. I've served in local government. I've served in federal government, and I married a man who I thought loved me, but that was not the case. And I became homeless, without a job, without money, without a vehicle, without a place to live. And the only place that I knew to go because of a church, a sign that was in our church, was Empower House. And because of Empower House, I now have a place to live, because at the time, their shelter was full. And it was only because I found a friend on Facebook that I met 20 years ago who just happened to live in this city, that I was able to live with her and her family for eight months. Had it not been, I, myself, and my three-year-old would have been living on the street. There are so many women who have chosen to not live and continue in a domestic violence situation. And so oftentimes, because the shelter is full, their only alternative is to live on the streets. I recently spoke with one of the ladies from the group that Empower House hosts once a week, and she said, "Frances, I'm going to go live in my car." My car. I said, "Please don't do that. Go to Empower House. Talk with them." They gather in the shelter, and I thank God for that. But there are so many women and children in this community who go without because of some, at the because of some at the hands of someone else. And I perused your budget, and I know that there's just one pie, and everyone is pulling on you for a piece of the pie. But as I looked at the hundreds and hundreds of pages of your budget, something stood out to me. And on your capital improvement, there's a project for the construction of a new, larger animal shelter. This shelter will provide...it says the existing shelter was not large enough to sufficiently accommodate the volume of animals coming to the shelter. Here's Empower House. They're serving your community. There are only one. They're asking you for additional funding to double the amount of people, women, and children that they can house in their community. And lastly, there's a red light. This capital improvement for this animal shelter is over $3 million. I ask you, look for funding elsewhere to help those in need. Thank you.
Helen Param, followed by Teri Fusaro.
Good afternoon. I'm Helen Param, and I'm the Executive Director of the Rappahannock Area Chapter of the American Red Cross. And with me this evening are Red Cross volunteers and our disaster manager. Our Red Cross volunteers, we have just a portion here tonight. But what's important for me to share is that they leave their homes 365 days a year to respond to disaster in Spotsylvania County and the other municipalities in Virginia Planning District 16. Tonight, I'm here to clarify and amplify our need for funding from Spotsylvania County. The mission of the Red Cross is to prevent and alleviate human suffering. We are a nonprofit organization. We do not receive funding from the government, and we do not charge those we help. We are funded by the generosity of the American public. Now, let's talk about the contribution that the Red Cross makes to Spotsylvania County. And we've had a wonderful relationship with the county for several decades. In fiscal year 2012, the Red Cross responded to 49 families in the Planning District. And of that number, 22, or 45%, resided in Spotsylvania County. In fiscal year '13, the Red Cross responded to 56 families in Virginia Planning District 16, and of that number, 29, or 52%, resided in Spotsylvania County. In fiscal year '14, the Red Cross responded to 66 families in the Planning District. And of that number, 24, or 36%, of those families resided in Spotsylvania County. Through January 2015, the Red Cross responded to 11 families that were victims of disaster. Spotsylvania County has received more disaster responses than any of the other municipalities in the Planning District. So what do our provisions include? They include shelter, food, diapers, infant formula, shoes, clothes, medicine, personal care items, or simply said another way, life's necessities. What does it cost to provide this type of disaster relief? On average, for a family of four, it costs $900. And why is the Red Cross asking for the county's funding and support? The Great Recession has affected us too. The Chronicle of Philanthropy says that 11% donations to charitable organizations in the U.S. have decreased 11%. And although the economy is rebounding, the effects of the Great Recession linger. In closing, the unique humanitarian services of the Red Cross are not duplicated by another organization in the county. The Red Cross can't fulfill its mission without the generosity of donors and volunteers. Therefore, we respectfully ask the County of Spotsylvania to award a grant of $2,000 to the Red Cross to provide for the delivery of disaster relief services to the residents of the county. Thank you.
Teri Fusaro, followed by Sheila Clark.
Good evening. My name is Teri Fusaro. I live at 11900 Boulder Court in the Chancellor District. And I'm speaking to you today as a Spotsylvania resident and as a volunteer with CASA. I have been a CASA for the past few years. CASA's come from all walks of life. I was a former prosecutor, and I saw how the children, once they were in the criminal justice system, were basically lost. CASA provides a representative for these children who have been removed from their homes. I'm asking you not to cut our budget, the $5,000 that you are contemplating. As Edie spoke, that would result in 20 less children in Spotsylvania County receiving CASA services. Now, you may ask yourself, "What is the purpose of a CASA?" We have a guardian ad litem, an attorney representing them. We have social workers. The fact of the matter is, the guardian ad litem frequently meets with the child maybe once. The social workers meet more frequently, but they are carrying very large caseloads. They cannot possibly commit the amount of time and energy to each child because of their staffing shortages. Therefore, the CASA fills in the gaps. What do we do? We meet with the child. We meet with the parents. We talk to the child's teachers. We talk to the child's therapists. These children are coming from homes where they have either been profoundly neglected or abused, or both. Oftentimes, no one has ever assessed their mental health, their emotional needs, their physical disabilities, their medical concerns that frequently have not been addressed by the biological parents. We are there to make sure that all of this is done. We frequently provide information to the DSS caseworkers. Mom and dad are doing drugs again, or the child has PTSD, or the child is in need of services. Dad is in jail. There was a domestic violence incident over the weekend. The social workers are unaware of this. We will call them, and we will let them know what is going on with the children's lives. We are also serving as a friend and an advocate for that child. Imagine if you can, a three-year-old, an eight-year-old, a teenager who is pulled from their home. They are scared. They're living with complete strangers, and they have no idea when or if they're going home. As a CASA, we try to help the parents to find the services they need to get their lives back on track, but also to work with the children to provide them a crutch, a safety net, someone that they can count on, who is not a part of the system. We are their voice to the court because the judge never sees the child. We are their method of telling the judge how they feel and what they've experienced. Gandhi said that "the measure of a civilization is how it treats its weakest members." Foster children are overwhelmingly in our jails. They commit suicide. They have various issues that follow them into life. These are among your most vulnerable constituents. And although they don't vote and they're not adults, they really need your help and this further tool that will help them overcome this process. Thank you.
Sheila Clark. Followed by Marcy Fields.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Clark, and I worked for Spotsylvania County for 17 years, lastly as deputy clerk to the Board of Supervisors. Instead of taking early retirement at 62, many of us worked additional three years to earn the benefit of no-cost health insurance. This is the county's commitment to us. It is my understanding that you do raise the salaries of county employees, but it barely covers the costs of their health insurance increases. There is no way to increase our salaries. So to maintain your proposed tax rate, instead of increasing it for county citizens, you are putting a squeeze on county retirees by having us pay a part of our health insurance and on county employees by not significantly raising their salaries. Your proposed tax rate also does not include funding for the library for the sixth year in a row. The library is asking for more books and increases in salaries for their employees. I ask that you honor your commitment to the library, to county employees, and to county retirees. Thank you.
Marcy Fields, followed by Reba Jackson.
Good evening. My name is Marcy Fields. I am a Spotsylvania County resident in the Chancellor District. I am a proud mother of three boys, two of which attend Spotsylvania County schools, and I am an employee of Spotsylvania County Schools. I proudly serve as the principal of Courthouse Road Elementary School. And tonight, I come before you as a parent, and I come before you as an employee. I would like to begin by saying that I take great pleasure and pride working for Dr. Baker and his cabinet, and working with the teachers and staff members at Courthouse Road, and the teachers and staff members that support my own children, both at Nye River and Wilderness Elementary. I have had the opportunity to also work in Prince William County Schools and Stafford County Schools. I was blessed with the opportunity to join Spotsylvania County two years ago as I was eager to be closer to my boys and to be completely surrounded by my community. However, I come before you tonight because I am deeply concerned. I see the differences in what we are able to offer our children here in this county in comparison to those that surround us. Spotsylvania County Schools are severely under-resourced. I know that best practice instruction involves complete immersion in critical thinking and problem-solving as the expectations for all students have increased. And I know that without the bare minimum financial support that we are asking for, we are not able to do the very best for our children. Without appropriate paraprofessional support, it is difficult to provide the amount of instructional groupings that are conducive to student success. Without the appropriate funding to support special education, it is difficult to provide specialized instruction that is necessary to provide free, appropriate public education for our students. Without specialists for math and literacy in each of our buildings, we are not able to receive the latest best practice modeling and coaching that the teachers and students require. And I must add, we have teachers. They are believers, and they instill relationships and make a difference. It is not their lack of belief. It is our lack of resources. I believe my job as a mother and a principal is my ministry. It is my purpose in life. And when I look into the eyes of the children at Courthouse Road, I see my own children. And when I look into the eyes of their parents, I see myself. I know their children deserve more. Spotsylvania County Schools has 10 schools in academic warning this year. Prince William County, three. Stafford, one. I am immersed in this, and I will tell you that our accreditation warning status is not because of the great people that serve our schools. They believe in your children. They fight, and they will keep on fighting because they love kids. But they need support. They need the resources. The children of Spotsylvania County deserve the very best. They deserve the resources that will afford them the opportunity to succeed. They deserve the support. Our parents deserve the support. Our children are our future. I implore you to please fund the school board's proposed budget. Thank you.
Reba Jackson. Reba Jackson, followed by Deborah Seorsky.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors, County Administration, and staff. I am Reba Jackson, current Vice Chair of the Spotsylvania Social Services Advisory Board. I live at 6815 Lake Ridge Drive in the Salem voting district. I am in my eighth year serving on the advisory board. I am here tonight representing the board and asking for your support to fully fund the DSS budget request for FY 2016, which includes funding for the human services agencies that fall under the DSS budget. The DSS Advisory Board has always taken pride in our communication with the human services agencies, whether this was in the form of meetings, correspondence with our board, or actual site visits. Over the past year, the advisory board has actively engaged in discussions with Spotsylvania's finance office and representatives of neighboring localities. Our purpose: to support a more informed and coordinated approach to funding community-based agencies that both recognize the populations served by the majority of the agencies, yet still acknowledge that priorities and resources may differ from locality to locality. As a result of these discussions, we established a shared due date for applications and a shared electronic Dropbox to receive these applications. Beginning this year, agencies completed one application that was then shared by all localities to which the agency was applying. The application still allows the agency to provide locality-specific information, both on dollars being requested and clients served, program outcomes. The DSS Advisory Board has always been committed to ensuring that tax dollars allocated to the community-based agencies were both appropriately used, resulting in a measurable impact in the community. But requests, needs exceed resources, and over the last five-plus years, that gap has become larger. This year, the DSS Advisory Board first identified the areas of priority for government support. These core areas of need would be those addressing basic shelter, basic sustenance, or essential safety. Essential safety meant there was imminent risk to the population being served in the absence of the program or service. As a second step, the board identified the target populations to be served as at-risk children, elderly, and the intellectually/physically disabled. Based on the core areas of need and the target populations, the board created a weighted matrix to allow for prioritization of the community-based agencies and their programs. The matrix was completed by each board member for each application and scored. Individual scores were then averaged to result in a preliminary prioritization of the agencies and their programs. Additional group discussion was held to determine if there were other factors not addressed in the matrix that would impact the prioritization. The resulting prioritization was then used to guide recommendations, not make them. Applications were examined, questions sent out to the applicants for response, and a limited number were requested to present directly to our board. The advisory board was faced with making some very hard decisions. Several agencies were recommended for changes in funding, some decreases, some increases, to reflect our prioritization, impact to individuals being served, impact to the community at large, and also the agency's availability of other resources. An agency's history of past county funding, while was noted, was not a determining factor in our decision. The advisory board supported and approved the recommendations submitted to you. We are confident the process was fair and allowed the limited resources for human services agencies to be most appropriately allocated. In conclusion, I ask for your support to fully fund the DSS budget request for FY 2016, including the human services agencies that fall under the Department of Social Services budget. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at this hearing, and thank you for your service to our county.
Deborah Sekerski, followed by Robin Monroe.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Sekerski. I reside in the Chancellor District. First, I want to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of all parents, guardians, and citizens who, like me, understand the critical role that education plays in our community. 12 years ago, my husband and I relocated here to Spotsylvania from Fairfax County. As you know, typical criteria for those who still need to commute to northern Virginia or DC include easy access to 95, but even more critical, a very critical awareness on the educational system itself. We moved with the belief that our children would receive comparable services and experiences as those children residing in other localities, and that our local governing body would fight to ensure that our children receive the attention they deserve. As a constituent, as a mother, I am concerned with what I feel based on previous meetings is this undercurrent of negativity towards funding our local school system. How can we explain that while our county's population and student enrollment increase, the percentage of funding continues to decrease? I see the growth in the number of houses and developments, which ultimately... I see the growth in the number of houses and developments, which ultimately means that more children are in our schools. So how is the downward trend of funding rationalized? From a logical standpoint, funding would need to increase so that our departments that serve our citizens, particularly those schools who now have higher demands for educating our children. Gone are the days of one plus one and let's spell the word cat, and welcome to the age of critical thinking, problem-solving, and analyzing. I speak from experience with my two daughters who both attend Spotsylvania County Schools. Expectations are definitely much different now, and you've heard that tonight with the rigor that has increased a lot. And as shared in previous meetings, our school system serves approximately 24,000 students throughout the year. I am unaware of a company, or a business, or a system in Spotsylvania that opens its doors to approximately 20% of our total community on a given day. As you, our Board of Supervisors, are tasked with working for the common good of the people of Spotsylvania, I would ask that at a minimum you approve the budget that has been presented by the school board. Now, another point I'd like to make is the tax rate, which right now is advertised as unchanged, or my understanding is it could potentially even be lowered. I do agree that that sounds wonderful. However, I do worry about the long-term impacts that that will have on our community. Do I appreciate as a taxpayer not having to pay exorbitant amounts? Absolutely. I feel, however, that we must have a balance. So in closing, I ask that you continue to advocate for our families, our citizens, and our community as a whole, but most importantly, let us agree to not cut corners when it comes to our most precious, independent citizens, our children. Thank you.
Robin Monroe. Followed by Sheri Steele.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robin Monroe. I live in the Lee Hill District. My address is 9219 St. Andrews Lane, Lee's Hill South. Ben Franklin once said, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest." Not only do I have the privilege of experiencing this every day as principal at Berkeley Elementary School, I experience this every day in life, when my teachers, my principals, my school counselors, and other educators went the extra mile to make sure my education was a top priority. I was one of seven children, raised in complete poverty. I didn't even have the advantage as a youngster of books in my home, money for extra things at school, et cetera. But what I did receive was a multitude of educators who believed in me, who invested in my education, and who encouraged me to be my very best. Their influence actually changed my life. And I'm not only grateful for that, but I feel compelled every day to advocate for all students because of what my educators did for me. As I stand before you today, I ask you to make an investment in our students. Fully fund the Spotsylvania County School Board and Superintendent's budget for fiscal year 1516. Local revenue is a vital source, whether we like it or not, for funding our local schools. When analyzing local revenue in the recent years, I saw revenue increases for the last five years. Unfortunately, the school transfer percentage from the county's general fund has gone down from just in the last few years in 2011, from 53.3% to 49.9% in 2015. Despite additional revenues and student enrollment rates remaining the same, or even trending upward, everything has stayed the same, and our funding has not increased. When I Googled the words "investment in education," my results were about 759 million. My search for Republican presidential candidates received about 2 million. Even a Google search of Hillary Clinton's email was only at about 10 million. Although some may find this humorous, the results really do parallel what residents of our country, our state, and our localities really do deem as important: investment in education. In a federal study in 2014, the Hart Research Associates conducted an exit poll in states with key senate races. Voters were asked, "Which would you be willing to follow, and would you think would be the higher priority for the president and the senate? Either A, reducing taxes on businesses and individuals, or B, investing in key priorities like education, healthcare, and job creation." A solid 67% said investing in key priorities, those including education. And only 29% said reducing taxes. Well, you may think that's a federal poll. Likewise, a 2014 poll at VCU found that more than two-thirds of Virginians say that we do not have enough funding for our schools. The demands placed on educators have never been higher, with cuts that have required.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Please fully fund our budget for the fiscal year. Thank you.
Sheri Steele.
Good evening. My name is Sheri Steele. I live at 10702 Maple Ridge Drive in the Salem District. I have three children, two at Cortland High School and one in Spotsylvania Middle School. I also serve in the Battlefield District as the principal of Cortland Elementary School. And I work every single day alongside the most dedicated, professional people that I could ever imagine. They give more and more, and more and more, and more, and more, and more and more every single day. And they don't do it for the paycheck. They do it because they love our children, that they're invested, they want to help them, they want to break the cycle of poverty, they want to break the struggles and the things that our children are going through to try to change their lives. Just as Mrs. Monroe said, the difference that an education can make in a child is so tremendous. The cost of workers who spoke of those children who are so abused, and those children are sitting in our classrooms across Spotsylvania County, and those are the kids we know about. There are so many more that are being abused and things are happening that we don't even know about. But we try so hard to build relationships with our students. We try to do everything we can to inspire them, to provide a rigorous education, to prepare them for their future, to be college and career-ready. But just as Mrs. Fields said, we are under-resourced. Our teachers, our staff, our PTO, everyone is just working as hard as they can, but we need help. We need more people. We need more people to help us learn how to do it even better and better, and to put more people close to those children to help them to succeed. Mrs. Harding, our PTO president, was up a moment ago, and I couldn't do what I do without the support of our PTO and our volunteers. I mean, the funding that they provide through fundraising, our volunteers who are in our classrooms, our teachers bring their parents, their grandparents, anyone they can to just be in the classes, be with those children, and to help them to succeed. What the PTO does to help enrich the lives of our children, to help us give us money. This year, we were able to go to Jamestown. I think every child who lives in Virginia should go to Jamestown. But for years, we couldn't do it because we didn't have the money to pay for the buses. And those children missed out on their wonderful opportunity. But through the fundraising efforts and the leadership of our PTO, we were in the support of our parent community, we were able to raise the money we needed to give children an awesome experience that they would have never been able to receive had it not been for them. So I just ask you to please, I hope every year we don't have to come here and beg, but to please support our school budget, our school division budget. Make our children a priority, make our education a priority, so we can make this an awesome place to live. Thank you.
Nicole Karianis. Nicole Karianis, followed by Sally Nowaczek.
Hi. My name's Nicole Karianis. I live at 10717 Lotus Court in the Cortland District voting area. The title I proudly hold is "Mom. Mom to Two Little Boys Enrolled in Spotsy County Schools." I am standing here before you because I feel strongly about the state of our educational system. At Courthouse Road Elementary, my children are surrounded by the most amazing teachers and support staff. They go above and beyond every day, but it's not enough. Courthouse Road is one of the many schools that stand in danger of losing their state As a parent, I want more for my children than I had growing up. We need to be able to sustain quality teachers. Teachers are being asked to do more with less. Para-support in the primary grades is virtually nonexistent. We need to stop putting Band-Aids on the county's educational needs. We need to fully fund the school board budget and give the teachers and our children the tools and support that they need to succeed. Thank you.
Sally Nowaczek, followed by Drusilla Mau.
Hello. My name is Sally Nowaczek, and I live at 10718 Heatherwood Drive in the Salem Voting District. I work and serve in the Battlefield District. I'm a teacher and a parent at Cortland Elementary. I'm here tonight to ask you to please fully support our school division budget. Thank you.
Drusilla Mau. Followed by Nancy McNamara.
Hi. My name is Drusilla Mau, and I'm a resident of the Livingston District. And I just want to take a moment, I had a speech prepared, but at this point in time, there's so much passion for the school board budget to be fully funded, and of course, that was what I was going to speak about, that I just want to take a moment to really recognize the passion that's here, and how much we care, and how much we're here and present, and how much the teachers work. I volunteer at the school for my child's kindergarten class, and I'm new. I'm not an educator, I'm just a mom, and I am floored by how much they care and how much they put forth. And I just encourage you to have those words, since speaker number one on, those words to really resonate with you. And so I would like to ask you to fully fund the school budget. Thank you.
Nancy McNamara. Followed by Lauren Saravia.
My name is Nancy McNamara. I live at 11506 General Wattsworth Drive in the Livingston District. I want to thank you for the difficult work you do addressing the needs of our county. My position is a budget concern which originates at the federal level but affects us locally. Citizens want the best schools, public safety, business environment, transportation, and county services we can afford. My opinion rests with the last three words: "we can afford." Federal mandates and business cycles face us as variables. Those of us in retirement must balance a seriously weak economy and increasing health expenses. We appreciate the property tax rate not being raised. The schools do bear an incredible budget burden, but particularly from the federal mandates, including expensive requirements for special needs students and illegals or immigrants with questionable documentation. My request for the schools is support for teachers in academic instruction. But the county budget has included pay increases for teachers and is keeping up with the needs of the schools. In two of the last three budget cycles, they did have pay increases. One cycle had an increase related to pensions. It seems you are responding to this need. My assumption is that the increases are based on merit. Schools alone do not make a community. Without our public safety and county service departments, we would not survive. I support them also in their requests. Thank you.
Lauren Saravia. Followed by Michelle Inga.
Hi. My name is Lauren Saravia, and I live at 5818 Jackson Road in the Cortland District. I'm an ESOL teacher at Battlefield Elementary. My job is to teach students who are learning English. Usually, my students are either the children of immigrants or immigrants themselves. Some of our students are brand-new to the United States, and others live in homes where the only language that is spoken is other than English. This growing population represents a trend for our county, and it's a reality for the future of Spotsylvania. I love teaching these students who represent the diverse, dynamic part of our community. I have about 75 ESOL students at Battlefield Elementary, along with another ESOL teacher who is there with me two days a week. Our students have very special learning needs as English-language learners. My fellow ESL teachers and classroom teachers and I work hard to provide the type of high-quality instruction that these students need. We teach our English-language learners in their regular classroom rather than pulling them out, so that these students receive equal access to the rigorous curriculum, but with the right kind of language support to make them successful. This type of collaborative teaching with the general education teachers takes a great deal of planning, coordination, and communication, but we're happy to do it so that our children can succeed. Although our English-language learners have many challenges, I truly believe that they have a chance to achieve, to become great readers, writers, math students, graduate high school, and find a meaningful career in our community. But without an excellent education, what can we expect for their futures and for the future of our community? Without adequate funding, how can the teachers provide these students with the kind of education they deserve? I ask that the board fully fund the reasonable budget put forth by the superintendent so that we can provide high-quality education that all students, English-language learners included, deserve. Thank you.
Michelle Inga, followed by Mariela Rivera Lopez.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Inga, and I am a 2014 Chancellor High School graduate. I live at 12636 Hidden Hills Lane. As a first child of two Spanish-speaking parents, the English language was difficult. Once I entered the Spotsylvania County Schools, I gained all the knowledge necessary to now attend community college and transfer to a four-year institution. My sister, who not only receives ESL but also speech services at Harrison Road, gains a lot of knowledge, and she loves all her teachers. I would like to thank you for your time, and I would like for you to please support the ESL, speech, and the superintendent's budget. Thank you so much.
Mariela Rivera Lopez, followed by Bob Morrison.
Hi. My name is Mariela Rivera Lopez. I live at 5506 Large Street. I am in fifth grade at Battlefield. I came from Honduras in April. I love my new school. I love my teachers. I am learning English. I want to graduate from high school. Thank you for helping my school.
Bob Morrison. Followed by Deborah Bro.
Good evening. My name is Robert Morrison. Thank you for allowing me to address this board. I've been before you several times during the last couple of years. Each time, it is to share with you my concerns, the way our county public servants are treated. Last year, I focused on the fire and rescue departments, lack of equitable financial and incentive package, and the risk it had on the county citizens. Your actions were positive. In February, I thanked you for supporting the fire and rescue medics, but stressed similar actions were needed to retain firefighter, company officer, and battalion chiefs. We cannot afford to lose any senior-level managers. On March 10, I expressed appreciation for your understanding of the needs of all county public servants. A state budget recently submitted to the governor for signature, status is unknown, identified funding for teachers and a salary raise for state employees. That's great, but what about the rest of the county public servants? We cannot continue to ignore the needs of these servants as the county grows with increased daily demands on their services without a salary raise. We need to identify funding to offset the shotfalls placed on these servants for years. We cannot continue to ask our county administrator for a balanced budget, ignoring the needs of these public servants. We should consider all county employees, including teachers, for a salary raise. They're all deserving. If changes aren't made, we'll not have the qualified staff to support the county in the manner we expect. We'll not have sufficient qualified fire and rescue personnel and other public safety officials to respond to the needs of our county. officials to respond to the needs of our citizens as the county grows without taking positive actions. We, the citizens, are not doing our job, and that is to ensure that those elected officials are doing their job to protect the interest of all citizens and employees. There's a common phrase we hear today: "Kick the can down the road." It's happening in Spotsylvania today, and it's only a matter of time when it really hurts. We are just beginning to feel the effects and the impact from the lack of salary increases and unfair treatment of our public servants. We need to identify a source of funding today to provide an equitable salary increase this year for these tireless, dedicated public servants. I've been able to talk to some of you since March 10 and appreciate your continued support. I only hope that those I've not been able to reach do understand the urgency and importance and will support these county requirements. Thank you.
Deborah Bro, followed by Charles Brown, which are numbers forty-two and forty-three.
Good evening, my name's Deborah Bro. Three years ago, my family and I moved to Spotsylvania County, and I was very excited. We came from Louisiana, which is one of the worst school districts in the nation. But since moving here, I've been surprised. I've gone and volunteered, I'm actually this year the president of the PTA, and I see how much money the PTA donates to the teachers so the teachers don't have to pay out-of-pocket for expenses. I've watched teachers go at Walmart and buy Clorox two wipes so their students don't get sick, or they don't get sick. This is silly. I mean, in Louisiana, even though we were one of the worst school districts in the country, when you said "education," people popped up. The money was there. I don't know if it was because our area that we lived in was destroyed by Katrina that we had such great funding afterwards, but since I've moved up here, actually, I would like you to support Dr. Baker, and if necessary, I really do think he actually should ask for more money, because he's not asking for enough. So, please, fully fund his budget, because what he's asking for is a very little bit of what he actually needs. Thank you.
Charles Brown, followed by Kim Bennett.
Hello, my name is Charlie Brown. I am a graduate of Battlefield Elementary, Battlefield Middle, and Cortland High School. Even though I graduated from Cortland High School, my father was transferred in the middle of my high school education to another school which was unfunded, and I can tell you right now, if I had not returned to Spotsylvania County Schools, I do not believe that I would have graduated college, because the schools in this area pushed me, which is what I needed at that time in my education. I have three kids who are going to school here. One has an IEP, she goes to Battlefield Elementary, my two boys go there also, and the loving, nurturing care that they receive from the school is great. I fully support the budget. And I'd like to make one more point. Mr. Yakubowski, I used to work with your mother at my current employer probably about fifteen years ago. The department that we served at the time were comprised mainly of associates with high school education, and most of the supervisors in the department also at high school and some college. Unfortunately, due to technology, that department is getting smaller and smaller, and at some point in the near future is going to be eliminated, simply because the transactions that they used to process are now automated to the point where we don't need to employ people to do them anymore. That impact is going to require that the local community raise the bar for education even higher than it already is. I would strongly recommend, to counter Ms. Brown who just spoke to me, or spoke a moment ago, not only do we need to match the current budget, you need to increase it. And I'll tell you the same thing that I tell the new employees who start at my company: When you start off your 401K, maybe you're only contributing 2%. Increase it every year, and you'll be surprised what you get when you retire. So what we need to do as a community is treat our education the same way, increase the budget a couple percent every year, and what we will see is, by the time these kids graduate, they're going to be ready to tackle the jobs, because employers now are looking at whether or not the current community has the educated people to support the jobs. In other words, if you are going to look fifteen to twenty years from now for an employer to land a new operation in the Fredericksburg area or in Spotsylvania County, it's not going to happen if we don't have students who have graduated and can afford to do the jobs that are going to be around then. Thank you very much.
Kim Bennett, followed by Michael Hirsch.
Hello, my name is Kim Bennett, and I reside at 6015 Blockhouse Road Partly, which is in the Berkeley District. I stand before you this evening, as I have for the past three years, as a concerned citizen and a parent of children in our school district. Every year, I speak about teachers who are asked to produce more and more, all the while having their class sizes increase, and the result of having too many students in a classroom to the point where learning is difficult, about having a net reduction in their pay due to increases in insurance costs, about having to continue to subsidize classroom needs with both money and time to fill the gaps left in funding. Please tell me when the last time you took money from your personal income to put back in your job. What other profession does this happen in? How long before we lose qualified teachers due to these issues? And finally, about still having the policy of pay-to-play sports and the continued lack of activity buses, which provided the biggest disadvantage to students in the rural areas of this county. Every time I pick up the paper, I test my frustration level when I read an article about yet another proposed 200 new home development here, or heaven help us, one like the proposed 2,270 residential development by the name of Jackson Village that was brought before the Planning Commission in December of 2014, of which 385 were to be age-restricted units, but these people would still expect competent personnel and services as taxpayers and citizens. One has to ask, where would these thousands of new students attend school? Who would respond to their fire, EMS, and law calls? I find myself also asking, why do we have to keep having parents stand here year after year and ask for a level of funding for the school budget and to provide the bare minimum for our students and teachers, and yet the county wants to add to an already stressed system? Members of your board campaigned on a no-tax-increase platform. I challenge you, how can necessary services be provided to the citizens of this county without proper funding? Annual inflation alone would seem to indicate at least maintaining current tax rates and provide much-needed operational funds. Spotsylvania County spends hundreds of thousands of dollars annually on overcome pay for first responders alone, because the current budget doesn't allow for additional permanent positions. The same people who call "no more taxes" are the same ones who want 24-hour fire service at all stations, as well as additional manpower for the sheriff's office. Something has to give, and it shouldn't be the safety of our citizens or the education of our children. The Board of Supervisors will be doing a disservice to the students and citizens of this county if they continue to underfund the needs of our school system. And I must agree with a former Board of Supervisor member, Mr. Gary Skinner, when he said, quote, "This county is wealthy enough to educate our children. That's the bottom line."
Michael Hirsch, followed by Liz Thurber.
Good evening, and thank you for your public service. I'm the Reverend Michael Hirsch, residing at 200 McConkey Street, Fredericksburg, Virginia. Previously, I was a Spotsylvania resident. I'm speaking not only as an individual citizen this evening, but also in my capacity as the chairman of the Fredericksburg, Virginia Patriots, a local Spotsylvania County-based Tea Party Patriots group. We are a nonpartisan, conservative, grassroots organization dedicated to preserving and promoting the ideals and principles of our nation's founders, as we find expressed in the Declaration of Independence, the Bill of Rights, the Constitution of the United States of America. The Fredericksburg, Virginia Patriots stands for every American and is home to over six hundred members who have come together to pursue the American dream and to keep that dream alive for their children and grandchildren. What unites the Tea Party movement is the same set of core principles that brought America together at its founding, that kindled the American dream in the hearts of those who struggled to build our nation and make the United States of America the greatest, most successful country in world history. At its roots, the American dream is about freedom, freedom to work hard, and freedom to keep the fruits of your labor and use it as you see fit without harming others and without hindering their freedom. Very simply, three guideline principles give rise to the freedom necessary to pursue and live the American dream: their personal freedom, economic freedom, and a debt-free future. Obviously, these three principles are interwoven and directly affect each other in all of our daily lives: personal freedom, economic freedom, debt-free future. We support a debt-free future because it is only fair and right to pay the debt we have incurred, so our children and grandchildren are not stuck with our bills. So many of our members are concerned about the America their grandchild will be left with in unsustainable debt. As you consider the recommended budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016, I want to say that we are grateful for your advertising the same residential property tax rate, as well as for the advertising a lower personal property rate. Two cents is a move in the right direction. If you could provide more relief, that would be great. As everyone knows, the acronym T in Tea Party stands for Taxed Enough Already. Among the core principles of the Fredericksburg, Virginia Patriots, we have number four: fiscal responsibility. We stand for fiscal responsibility and economic freedom, which means a growing economy with reduced tax rates and reduced government spending, so we will all have a chance to earn more and businesses can hire more people. We support policies that allow Spotsavianians to keep more of their own money to do with as they see fit, and policies that will provide for and enable opportunities to find good jobs or create and grow businesses. Likewise, we support policies that will present the best chances for Spotsylvania, Virginia, and these United States to grow and maintain their position as leaders for economic opportunity. I understand your overall budget is expanding due to the need for additional firefighters and teachers. This may cause some consideration in making other cuts. I urge you to wisely make these cuts instead of taking the easier path, I think someone invoked kicking the can down the road, of raising taxes. With lower taxes resulting from cuts in spending, individuals and families will have greater resources and opportunities. It is in keeping with the principles of the American dream: working hard and being rewarded, keeping more of what you earn, and using it as you believe is in your best interests while not harming others. One of the surest roads to this economic growth and the freedom from our looming debt is through reduced taxes. With lower taxes, then Spotsavianians are better able to determine the use of their money, and businesses would be afforded the predictability of lowered tax rates, allowing them to grow and hire more employees. Our second core principle, constitutionally limited government, and our eighth core principle, free-market economy, also speak to the matter of taxation and consideration of the recommended We need to be sure that we look for ways to reduce spending by reducing the size and scope of government, because when government grows too large, it is detrimental to the economy. Many government policies and regulations, no matter what the initial intent may have been, often end up restricting economic opportunities and job growth. The encumbrance of additional taxes and regulations are sure means to hindering a free-market economy. As chairman of the Fredericksburg, Virginia Patriots, I am pleased to have this opportunity to speak to you, as we consider it our civic duty to participate peacefully, respectfully, and lawfully in the political process in order to recapture the vision and original intent of the founding documents. While America's founding principles upon which the American dream is built began as a beacon to anyone running from tyranny, today's high taxes and overregulation have become a significant roadblock to pursuing and achieving the American dream. If you could reduce the tax rate again, as I said previously, it would be greatly appreciated. In the future, we will show our appreciation for that much need of relief in the press, at our website, fredvapats.org, and most importantly, at the polls. Thank you again.
Liz Thurber, followed by Jim Thurber.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Thurber. I live at 10707 Woodland Drive in the Cortland District. And my husband, being the wise man that he is, is going to just let me talk, so you can scratch his name from after that, after me. I'm not a member of a board, or I'm not a member of a PTO, I'm not a member of anything. I'm just one of the taxpayers that has to pay for all this stuff. And after listening to everything here tonight, I feel a little bit like what I've been reading on the internet, they call us "tax donkeys," because I would love to have everything too, but I can't afford everything. And I appreciate the board not raising the taxes, but I really would like to see my taxes lowered. It's hard for my husband and I to stand around the table with my daughter and cut out of our budget. I have health insurance premiums that are going up, my co-pays are up, I fund my retirement myself, my husband funds his. We have expenses, too. And although I would love to live on champagne and tenterloin and travel to exotic places and do things, we have to make reasonable cuts to our budget. And when you don't cut your budget, I have to cut mine. I'm tired of cutting my budget, and I think we need to bring the taxes down, not just not increase them, but actually reduce them. And I want to just say about all the school stuff I hear today, I homeschooled my daughter, and I can tell you, we didn't spend anywhere near the amount of money this county spends per student to educate my daughter, and she's getting straight A's, she's doing great. There's a lot of ways to educate children less expensively, and I think, you know, we need to explore those ways. And so again, I'm just, I'm nobody special, I don't make a lot of money, we're not wealthy, and I would like to remind you also that if you cut my taxes, I can make donations to some of these groups that, you know, serve domestic violence and everything. These are tragic cases, they need to be supported, but they don't have to be supported through the taxpayers. If you tax, reduce me, I can help them, and it's easier for me and cheaper for me to donate to them directly than it is to donate to you than to have you donate to them. So thank you again, and please consider reducing our taxes.
Sam Adams, followed by Katie Adams.
Hello, my name's Sam Adams, I live on Batiste Lane, the Berkeley District. This is my fourth year here, and I've had the same message the whole time. My message is that we've been slipping with the budget to the point of failing. I think we've gone beyond frugal, and now we're failing our kids. I have four kids in Spotsylvania County Schools. My first two did very well. My daughter's going to be speaking next. She's probably one of the only kids in Spotsylvania County Schools, or one of the few that received special education dollars in the beginning of her education, and now she's in the Commonwealth Governor's School and doing great. So I think that speaks volumes to what used to be. However, since that time, since she started school and loved it, around 2008, you guys started cutting the budget. I have two kids that started school after those budgets have started, and they're now doing nearly as well. I've gotten a few laughs in the past years of my kids saying that the school's like the halfway house, and it is, it's like general population. You took two hundred, over two hundred adults out of the Spotsylvania education system. When you do that, it creates chaos. You know, one teacher with twenty kids can only do so much. I spent a lot of time in there, I was in an accident, had a lot of time at home, spent a lot of time in the schools, I saw it. It's really not a good site to be in. I tip my hat to all the teachers here, appreciate everything you do, that's why we're here to support you. If you don't know who Mr. Skinner is, you should. I appreciate everything you do, sir, he's third from the right, you should vote for him, he's not in my district, but I'm going to be contacting you and see what I can do to help you. Mr. Sebula, fifth from the right, is not a big supporter of education, sorry, but it's gotten bad. You've been to my house on Batiste Lane, I've talked to you three times, right? Hopefully you remember. But this is the impact of decreased funding. Ten schools and academic warning, that's on your watch, right? What does that say? It's not if we're going to fail or when we're going to fail, we have failed. The failure is now, it's already happened. Unfortunately for my two, they're already far enough in, my younger two, that chances are it's going to be really tough for them to start being big believers in the education system. So I'm kind of here supporting the next group of kids, they're in preschool and kindergarten. As Katie comes up and talks, I want you to realize that she's kind of a dying breed, so I think sadly she represents one of the last years that was a success. Once again, I appreciate everything you guys do, you educators, Dr. Baker, I got to agree with the other people that came up here and said that I support his budget, I hope you'll support his budget, but it's not enough. Thank you very much.
Katie Adams, followed by Vivica Berry.
Hi, my name is Katie Adams, and I am a student at Mass Apunix, but I am also a student in the Commonwealth Governor's School. student in the Commonwealth Governor's School, as you already heard. You hear a lot of parents and administrators and teachers come up here and fight for the budget and, you know, the students, but I think it'll be refreshing to hear a student fight for her future. And first of all, I would like to thank you for listening and taking into account everyone's opinions and sitting here and, you know, having an open mind, I would hope. I don't understand your job, and I'm not going to act like I do, and I don't understand how heavy this weighs on your shoulders, but I would like to explain to you what I do understand. I know that elementary school plays what I would think is the biggest role in my education so far, and I had the best welcoming in to the school system, but I have watched my younger siblings not have that, and they don't strive like I do. And that may be because we have different personalities, but I really don't think that's what it is. Being in governor's school, I see both sides of the budget. I see the side where teachers are scraping by and trying to provide for their classrooms, different things that they're not given, but in governor's school, we have the leniency to be able to learn the way that—I think that all students should be given the opportunity to learn. We have the materials we need. We have the teachers who are there and dedicated. I'm not saying any other teachers aren't dedicated in any way, but they go beyond anything I've ever seen before, and that I think is what all public schools should be like. It shouldn't be a matter of getting into a different program to be offered this type of education. It should be in every single school everywhere. I can say as of now that CGS has completely changed my life. It has changed my education fully. It's changed what I want to be when I grow up. It's opened my eyes to different horizons, and I think it's wrong to strip the children coming into the school system now of all the opportunities I was given and all the opportunities children before me have been given. I've always learned that there are two things that are the best things to invest in, and that is yourself and your future. And all of the children in schools now are your future and my future, and I am your future. So I think that it's in everyone's best interest to invest in the students, to help their education and help them learn what they want to be when they grow up, so they can help you. Like someone had previously said, that public schools touch every child. So I think it's in your best interest to make sure you affect them positively rather than negatively. Thank you.
Vivica Berry, followed by Christine Hoben.
Hi there, thank you. I'm Vivica Berry. My address is 10321 Antietam Court. Thank you all for being here, and a big thank you to all the teachers and wonderful people who are here serving so many areas of our communities. I'm here to urge that one of the greatest gifts we can give our children is a balanced budget. And one of the things that keeps me up at night is our national debt that's over 18 trillion, and we owe millions, I think, what, 500 million in liabilities here. I'd like to see more of our money go into a rainy day budget, so—because we're in one of the wealthiest areas of the whole country because of our proximity to DC. If you go to California, where a good friend of mine had to move three years ago, she took her kids out of the wonderful schools here, moved there, you know, no programs, no buses going anywhere, no music, she has to pay for all the sports. This is what happens when you don't budget, and when you don't have a rainy day budget, and when you just keep promising everything to everyone so that everyone will like you. And so I urge to lower taxes. We have many, many wonderful resources for education. You know, one of my best was my father. We used to go out for brunches once a month, and we'd talk about either drugs, sex, alcohol, or it was a smoking talk, or—so let's not underestimate our parents. They're the greatest teachers we'll ever have. Let's encourage and empower them and let them know how important they are, because teachers are fantastic, but we need our parents, and we need them to know how much we need them. And then in terms of other fantastic educational resources, we have libraries that are incredible. Those are free. My grandfather got his education going to the New York museums. I don't think he went to school until he went to—the army and then on to the university. So I really urge us to look, to cut, 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 to get a rainy day budget, so that when we need it, help is there for our children, and not just that we gave them all these wonderful things and oops, we forgot that. Thank you very much.
Christine Hoben, followed by Ann Hughes.
Hello, my name is Kristy Hoben, and I live at 10811 Astorita Avenue in the Livingston District. I'm reading a letter tonight on behalf of my husband, Nick Hoben, who could not be here tonight because his company, Radio Reconnaissance Technologies Incorporated, just recently relocated to Spotsylvania County, and tonight's their open house. Dear Board Members, I am a Spotsylvania County resident, parent to three children currently attending Spotsylvania County Public Schools, and a husband to a Post Oak Middle School math teacher. I'm writing on behalf of them all to recommend the board's full adoption of Dr. Baker's proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. As you are well aware, the priority of this budget is to provide employment compensation increases. As I understand it, compensation increases will happen regardless of the board's decision to fully fund the school system's budget or not. However, I would encourage the board members to look beyond the good feelings of pay increases and note the areas that would be adversely affected by a reduced budget. Previous years of belt tightening and trimming the fat have provided for a leaner, less costly system, but have also stripped away items that strengthen the education of our children. As a parent, I've watched these changes, including no option to learn a second language for my two younger children, addition of athletic fees, and the elimination of some sports or extracurricular activities, no activity buses, and increases of price for school lunches. These and other less direct changes can be detrimental to the overall health of the school system. Student-to-teacher ratios are a prime example. Between Spotsylvania County's elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, the middle schools have the highest student-to-teacher ratio. I would argue that it is no coincidence that just under half of the middle schools are currently accredited with warning. The technique of allowing positions within the school system to go vacant due to attrition has forced school administrators to place a higher number of students in each classroom. This minimizes the time teachers have to provide the all-important, one-to-one guidance required to advance individual student learning. It may not be the time to add more positions, but it is most definitely time to ensure the ones currently allotted are provided for. As the president of a small business, I know the value of people. Any organization is only as good as the people that work for it. The school system's teachers and administrators are its prized assets, and I am excited to see that Dr. Baker's budget recognizes that. I am also extremely familiar with budget restraints and need to remain frugal in their expenditures when the situation's warrant. To that, I would add that sometimes it is entirely appropriate to spend outside your comfort zone in order to mitigate losing ground and finding it even more difficult to come back from the unknown adversity, which we all know will come up at least opportune time. As a parent with children in the school system—
Ma'am, your time is up.
Okay. I wish that you would fund Dr. Baker's budget. Thank you.
Ann Hughes, followed by Kayla Hughes.
Hello, my name is Ann Hughes, and I live at 5910 North Cranston Lane in the Battlefield Voting District. I have the unique perspective of being a parent educator for the county and a parent of three children with varying educational needs. A fully funded budget for our schools is vital. Without it, the resources necessary to address an array of educational needs by the county student body, there will be children that fall through the gaps created by an underfunded budget. I doubt any of us want those kids to be one of ours or to have to explain to a parent why their child doesn't have the access to resources they may need to be truly successful. We all understand the complexities of budgeting, but cutting resources and funding for those that need it the most, the children in our schools, is quite short-sighted, in my opinion. A fully funded budget that leads to the advancement of all the children possible is paramount for their future success and contributing members to society. So please fully fund the budget for Spotsylvania County schools. Thank you.
Kayla Hughes, followed by Madeline Hughes.
Hello, my name is Kayla Hughes, and I am from the Battlefield Voting District. I am 10 years old and in the fourth grade at Cortlandt Elementary School. I'm here tonight to ask you to please fully support the school division budget. I have been positively influenced by many of my teachers, and because of that, I would like to be a teacher when I grow up. Your support of the school division budget will help me get a good education so I can reach my goals. Thank you for allowing me the—thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Madeline Hughes, followed by Haley Hughes.
My name is Malangale Hughes, and I am from the Battlefield Vote—District. I am eight years old, and I am in the second grade at Cortlandt Elementary School. I am here today to ask you to fully support the school's budget. I am asking you to do this because I love to learn and I want to be a zookeeper when one day. Please help me, my school have the money to give me a good education. Thank you.
Haley Hughes, followed by Dale Swanson.
Hi, my name is Haley Grace Hughes, and I am from the Battlefield Voting District. I am seven years old and in the first grade at Cortlandt Elementary School. I am here asking you to fully support the school division budget. My teachers and principals work very hard to help me learn in a fun and safe environment. A fully funded budget will help them continue to provide the best support for me and all my schoolmates. Without your fully support, it makes it harder for kids to fulfill their dreams, like my dream, to one day be able to work with penguins. Thank you, and have a good night.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Dale Swanson. I reside at 11904 Burgess Lane in the Cortlandt Voting District. I represent the Spotsylvania Conservative Women's Coalition. We're a nonpartisan organization of women dedicated to restoring our constitutional republic, limited government, protecting property rights, and restoring strong moral and ethical leadership in government. I wish to thank you for advertising the same residential property rate as last year and working hard to keep our taxes low. Thank you for advertising a lower personal property tax rate. Two cents is a move in the right direction, and I'm sure it's going to make a lot of people happy. No personal property taxes is preferred by conservatives. I wish to personally thank Supervisor David Ross for finding and hopefully fixing the county employee abuse of the credit card use. That should help our budget a little bit. We need to encourage county employees to cut waste. As a county resident and property owner, I am very concerned at the direction this board has taken since the last election. Most of you ran on conservative platforms. Allow me to read you the definition of a conservative taken from the Student News Daily. Since all these teachers were here, I thought they'd be interested, and they should visit this site. Conservatives believe in personal responsibility, limited government, free markets, individual liberty, traditional American values, and strong national defense. Believe the role of government should be—provide people the freedom necessary to pursue their own goals. Conservative policies generally emphasize empowerment of the individuals to solve problems. Conservatives should never seek debt over pay-as-you-go, but that is exactly what this board did with the bond referendum last fall. Pay-as-you-go is far better approach and requires explicit approval of each project as it affects that year's tax bill. In other words, if each project is—to be undertaken—is paid for from your—this year's taxes, it is far more likely to be carefully scrutinized. This is what is meant by limited government. We, the conservatives, managed to defeat two of these bonds. And I find it interesting that all these parents and teachers and principals never even mentioned the one—the 1-plus, 141 million-plus bonds that was passed for their technologies and new equipment for the schools. They failed to mention that, but that's going to be paid for with our tax dollars. The admission tax, too. I'm concerned with the admission tax or events tax that some of this board was seeking to impose on the residents of Spotsylvania. That could have easily impacted every school and church event held in this county where there was a charge for admission. That means football games, school dances, fall festivals, as well as church plays and dinners. Allow me to read from a closer look at stadium subsidies. Imposing new taxes introduce new administrative costs and makes the economy less efficient. Consider the common practice of funding stadiums and arena subsidies with new taxes on hotel occupancy and rental cars. One argument for such taxes at the local level is that they are paid by outside visitors, many of whom may be in town to see a sporting event, but the taxes would also be paid for by travelers, businessmen, and conventioners. When comparing cities to host an upcoming meeting of business and professional association may select between otherwise comparable cities based on which one has the lower hotel and rental car taxes. In other words, the new taxes used to subsidize a stadium construction may ultimately reduce visits to the city by non-sports-related travelers. Three, I'm concerned that the majority of this board is considering taking 25 million of the bond money or taxpayer money to become partners with a ballpark, when we know that the ROI, the return on investment, is never as high as projected or expected. I ask you, is that the role of government? Is it what conservatism looks like? Is this the vision we have for Spotsylvania County? And I would say that we're not a rich county, and we can't afford to raise taxes. It was stated here earlier tonight that we have over 10,000 residents that are below the poverty level. So I appreciate it if you will keep our taxes low. Thank you.
At this point, we'll take a short recess of 10 minutes. Amy, can you please call the next names?
Yes, sir. The following speaker is Lyndon Hott followed by Jackie Keith.
Hello. My name is Lyndon Hott. Thank you for hav- having me here. I'm an ESL teacher at Salem Elementary School. This is my second year teaching in Spotsylvania County from Wilmington, North Carolina. I'm the only full-time teacher at Salem along with another teacher who's at our school three days a week. I currently have a population of 108 students on my, on our caseload. Last year, I had a population of 84 students. That's a 29% increase. I have to say that I'm a little bit troubled by the comments that have been made by some of our supervisors concerning our ESL kids. We, we as ESL teachers, I feel we're woefully understaffed, but our goal is to offer a quality education to every child that comes through our doors and contrary to popular belief, the vast majority, vast majority of our population comes from a limited English proficiency background. This, this means their parents speak little to no English. These students were born here and these, these students need remediation and support from the ESL teachers so they can succeed in the classroom, and they do succeed in the classroom. While others do come from abroad, by their second year here, they are by and large accessing the curriculum and making great strides. Our teachers bend over backwards to help in this acclimation process and these students
I'm kind of the new kid on the block here. I come from another burg, from another vanya, from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. So it's nice to be here. Been here about two years now and I have a daughter who is in seventh grade at Freedom Middle School. I was kind of reluctant to come up here because I am the new kid on the block, but I want to say a couple things. And the first thing I'd like to say is that we've heard so many pleas, so many impassioned heartfelt pleas from so many people who have so many needs. And I know that every person here tonight, their heart has gone out to them, as I believe, would like to believe that yours does too. My heart goes out to you because you've got the toughest job going. You're asked to squeeze more and more blood out of those rocks when there's very few drops of blood left in there. And when you ask for more rocks, you're liable to get some more rocks, but they're going to be coming in like Steven Strasberg fastballs. So you've got to really be on your toes there. It's a tough, tough go. You've chosen this. I obviously am not making excuses for you. I'm just saying that I'm sure a lot of people not only sympathize with your position, but like myself, I can empathize with it because I have been a businessman in my life. I've had to make payroll. I've had to make budgets. I graduated and was a school teacher back in the olden days. In 1972, I graduated from a small college in Pennsylvania back when teachers made $9,000 a year, which at that time I decided to go into a private business. Next 10 years, I did pretty well for myself and then the economy kind of fell out of the steel business in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And not only business shutdowns, whole towns shut down. I ended up in Kansas City, Missouri and through a long, long involved situation, I became friends with a fellow who ran a social services agency there in the inner city of Kansas City, Missouri, some of the toughest grounds going. And I did end up teaching there along with a lot of other things. I taught ESL to people who came from foreign countries because we dealt with a lot of refugees from foreign countries. I taught GED because there was a lot of underprivileged people there that didn't ever graduate from high school, who needed to get their degree there. I'm saying this because I know that everyone here has their needs and has their passionate desire to have those needs fulfilled. My one desire right now is to express my gratitude and my appreciation of what my daughter has received at Freedom Middle School. She came here as a good student and she's still a good student. But there are always some other peripheral issues that don't come out of books and don't come out of situations where it's always a grades. My daughter had some social problems and I'll tell you, the principal, the teachers, the guidance counselor, everybody at that school has not only gone the extra mile, they have gone the extra distance and I'm so thankful for that. And with those kind of teachers, that kind of system, I also plead that you fund this budget for the government. Thank you.
Alex Cameron followed by Ben Dover.
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Cameron. Thank you for having me. I'm a resident of Spotsylvania County in the Chancellor District. I'm currently employed in law enforcement as a detective. However, my primary focus are my two children, Isabella and Annemarie. Cameron and Annemarie still attend Harrison Road Elementary School where I often volunteer any chance I get. I believe their education is very important and my involvement even more. Tonight I request full funds for their school district. Harrison Road has been exceptionally inviting for that. I am truly grateful. Since my time at Harrison Road, I have volunteered in many school functions such as field trips, math and science night, S.O.L. Jeopardy night, reading night, bingo night, fall festivals, school dances, boost-a-thon and mini war activities. These activities put on by volunteers, teachers and school administrators, these all go for continuing education for these children. Also fundraising to get more money for different projects that the school are trying to get, such as playgrounds, purchasing like printers, refrigerators, poster makers, different things that we tend to forget about, small things in the school that, just paper, pencils. Just this week I sent an email to my teacher and asked her, "Is there any school supplies that you need?" And she stated, "Yeah, you know, pencils, expo markers." And I brought several boxes in and the teachers are not going to ask for these things. You know, we get these, we bring them in at the beginning of the school year and these kids go through them and there's just so much stuff that these teachers need and they're going out of pocket to buy these things because they're not going to ask for them. This is why I'm here. Please approve the money for the teachers to get raises and for them to have proper tools to effectively teach their students. I know in my job that I can't do my job without proper tools and these teachers are not going to be able to effectively teach the students without the proper tools, pencils and paper and such items. So let's make sure that the children have what they need to succeed. Thank you.
Scott Cook followed by Tanya Nakco.
Yes, I'm Scott Cook. I live at 10-818 Catharpen in Livingston, No Bond District. Everybody's wanting more tonight and I want less. Senior citizens like less taxes. I appreciate you holding the line on taxation, but some of the personal property needs to go. I have some vehicles in their 80s that operate. I'm still paying taxes on them. When's enough collected by the county for a truck made in 1980? So I'm just asking that you stick to your conservative principles, hold the line on the spending, cut where you can. And I was in a meeting last year for the bonds and a county employee said that maybe if you don't like the taxes in Spotsylvania, you ought to move. Well, I've been here a long time. My wife's family's been here since colonial days. We're not going anywhere, but we will work in elections to make sure that conservative values in Spotsylvania stand. So I urge you to cut where you can. Thank you.
Tanya Nakco followed by Ingrid Fitzpatrick. Tanya? Ingrid Fitzpatrick, excuse me.
Hi, my name is Ingrid Fitzpatrick. I live at 5 North Hill Court and I am in the Lee Hill District. I come here as a first-time speaker and I'm extremely nervous. This is not my cup of tea. But when I find something that moves me, I make it my cup of tea. I really urge you to support the schools fully. I've heard a lot of talk about immigrants. My husband is an immigrant. I myself have been overseas as a young child, so I have seen many different types of educational systems. The educational systems that work are the ones that are fully funded. The systems that work, the societies that work are the societies that say that our children are important and that they get what they deserve. So I please ask humbly and respectfully to please fully support our schools.
Jonathan Ramey followed by Raquel Pouncy.
Hello. Good evening. My name's Jonathan Ramey. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Livingston Elementary. I live in the Massaponix area and live in the Lee Hill District. I stand here tonight to really speak to you for the people that can't be here tonight, for the ones that are home right now, reading or studying or should be asleep by this time. And those are for the students. And I speak for them and that we need to support them. And how do we support them? You know, the very basic sense of what we do is we care for children and we nurture them and we hear them and we listen to them. We are their fathers and mothers. We are their counselors. We're their friends. We're the shoulder to cry on. And you know, we're their teachers and we're there for them every single day and we worry about them every single night. And I just want to say that how we support them is through retaining quality teachers in this county. And I think, to me, a quality teacher is someone who goes to work every single day with a smile on their face. Someone who goes into the building and no matter what personal things are going on in their life, they have a smile on their face and because they have to be there for those students and they want to be. And I think the most important thing is that we love our students and we want to be there for them. And I think that how we retain these quality teachers is that we give them, us and myself, a competitive salary and benefits that allows us to live and work in this county and to provide for our families. According to The Atlantic, 40 to 50% of teachers quit within five years. And I think that, do we, as a county, do we want to be responsible to contribute to that percentage? And you know, I think the other thing is, I hear people saying that, "Please support the budget," and I do. "Please, please support the budget." But the other part of me, because that budget that you support, that's my well-being and that's my salary and how I live. But the other part of me thinks that, you know, I feel like I, and we as teachers deserve more. So thank you for hearing me. Have a good night.
Raquel Pouncy followed by Carlos Moore.
Good evening, Board of Directors. Excuse me. I am a, I live at 2001 Buckminster Court in the Chancellor District. I am a PTA member. I am a volunteer in the classrooms, but most importantly, I am a concerned parent. I have two children at Harrison Road Elementary as well as a middle schooler at Freedom Middle, soon to be high school student. Yes, I am here to support the budget, but I'm here to support the budget because of firsthand experience. I volunteer quite often. I'm in the classrooms as the teachers are having to look at the different students, look at the students that have the different reading levels and address those issues. It takes extra. It takes the extra time. It takes the extra capabilities, education of these teachers to be able to address every student's needs. Therefore, the education is needed for the teachers, all teachers. I know everybody's saying the different things about the taxpayers and the, but every teacher that is in Spotsylvania County are taxpayers. They pay taxes just like everybody else who doesn't have students in the school systems. I support Dr. Baker's budget and I hope that you do the same. Thank you.
Carlos Moore followed by Charles Love.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I think you guys need a hand because you've been up here a long time. I'll be honest with you. What is a teacher worth? I live in the Chancellor District. I have a 35-year-old that graduated from Chancellor. I have a 25-year-old that graduated from Riverbend and I have a granddaughter. I know I don't look that old, but she's going into high school. What is a teacher worth? As a teacher, I've worked 26 years in this county, 31 years total. I am more than an instructor. I am there when a child is crying or expressing the joys of accomplishment. I am there to share in moments of sorrow and pain. I am there to hear the thoughts of suicide. That was last week. The reactions to molestation. That was two days ago. Rape yesterday. Self-mutilation last year. Alcoholism, that's almost every day. Domestic and gang violence, that's in the next couple of days. Homelessness, that was last year. And even murder. Read the paper. I see and feel the anger and the frustration. I am there in life and death. I answer the questions about violence, drug abuse, alcoholism, sexual orientation, bullies, poverty and teen pregnancy. In the darkness of what many of our students live with and bring to school on a daily basis, a heavy bag of burdens, I continue to teach. I'm there when my students feel no one else is willing to listen or understand. I'm there not because I have to be, but because I am needed and I want to be there. I need to be there. I am here for the needs of our students. As teachers, we continue to be underpaid. That's par for the course. I knew when I went into this discipline, we would not be paid well, but I continued. We don't ask for much, yet much is expected of us, always. I ask you, with all that we deal with every day, have we really been fairly compensated? How many years have passed with no raise or step increases? Are we fairly compensated? We fight for our students. We ask that someone stand and fight for us. I respectfully ask that you balance this budget, do what you need to do. And I invite anyone to come into the school system, substitute or volunteer, anyone from either side. Come into the school system, volunteer and see what we have to do. Step in our shoes for a little while and see what we have to do. Then you can understand what we go through as teachers when we're teaching your children. Because if we don't touch them and educate them, they will be breaking into your houses. They will be overdosing on heroin. They will be robbing and stealing, no matter what tax base we pay, no matter what we do. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Charles Love followed by Elizabeth Stark.
Good evening. I'm Charles Love and I live in the Salem District. Thank you for allowing this community to voice their concerns about this budget. I am also, I am a teacher at Harrison Road Elementary and I'm also a resident here in Spotsylvania County. I have adopted Spotsylvania County as my home. And I did not get the opportunity to do my education here in Spotsylvania County, to work with wonderful teachers, staff members and administrators that would help further my education, my cause, what I would need to do in my life. At Harrison Road, we have a motto where we say, "Children first." And as teachers, that's what we try to do. As staff members, as administrators around the building, we try to put our children first. And we need you to support that budget so that we may do that. I heard this evening someone toss around adages, "We can't keep kicking the can down the road." One of the ones that I heard was, "A return on your investment." So I would say, as you approve Dr. Baker's budget, that you get a return on your investment because the children that we teach, they will be the police officers, the firefighters, the doctors, the lawyers that will continue to carry Spotsylvania County forward. So I would ask again, please support the budget. Let's get a return on our investment.
Elizabeth Stark followed by Mike Smith.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Stark. I live in the Lee Hills District at 10-321 Watford Lane. I have been a county taxpayer and a registered voter for over 11 years. My son attends fifth grade at Parkside Elementary. I came here tonight in support of our school budget as presented by our school board. Public education is the cornerstone, a cornerstone of our democracy. Please fully fund this budget. Thank you.
Mike Smith followed by Charles Tuck.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for having this meeting tonight and giving us the opportunity to speak and voice our opinions as our elected representatives and as the school boards as well, and the administrative staff. We appreciate and I appreciate all the efforts you put into making the best decisions for our county because it's not just Dr. Baker's budget or the teacher's budget or the board's budget. It's our budget and we all have a hand in it and we all have a piece in it. I want to start off by saying, I understand there's some raises that are being proposed and I'm sure they're deserving and for the most part, I hope people get it, especially having gotten a raise in a while. And I know individual, small amounts of money can go a long ways to a family. But I also want to remind you that whatever raise you're going to get, you're going to get taxed on it. So it's not going to be the full amount. And it was my wish and my hope that anyone getting a raise could keep every penny of it, but that's not the case. So what are you going to lose? 15%, 20%? Probably closer to 50% when you look at all the taxes. And I just want to take a second here to talk about taxes. First, you have income tax on your income. Then you have state income tax, okay? Then you might have some county taxes. You have Medicare and Medicaid, all right? That's just, that's just a That's just the starting point. It's the taxes that you don't see and you don't feel because they're not very big and they may not impact you and maybe you don't even mind paying some of them. But the fact is, they add up and they're going to take away from the money and from the pay raise that you're given. Okay, a couple of different taxes. Sales tax, telephone tax. We pay a lot of taxes on our cell phones and telephones. Trailer registration fees, vehicle license registration tax. How many times do you need to buy and sell a car and pay sales tax on that until you don't have to do it anymore? I thought it was enough the first time when I bought a car and I don't understand why we continue to do that when we buy and sell these vehicles. Personal property tax. I have four cars because I have four people that can drive cars, all right? You got to get around and you just can't walk and take the bus here in Spotsylvania County or get up to Quantico or DC, okay? You got to have a car. It's a lot and I understand you're reducing it and I appreciate those efforts. If I had my way, I'd like to see the personal property tax go away. A couple other taxes. Water registration tax. I don't own a watercraft, I don't own a boat or a jet ski, but I can understand those people that do, who are, you know, paying taxes when they buy the gas or get it fixed or go out on Lake Ann and pay other fees to enjoy that aircraft, that watercraft. So, we have a lot of taxes out there. So, what's coming down the road here? What do we need to be aware of? Rain tax, internet tax, climate tax? How about a meal tax? Maybe you've heard that one being tossed around up in Maryland and some other areas in DC, meal tax. I know I'm already paying enough when I buy my Five Guys hamburger, I don't want to pay any more. I challenge the board and our elected officials to reduce or eliminate the taxes you have influence over and to do the best you can. I've been a resident of this county since 2007, okay? I've put two kids through Cortland High School, me and my wife, and we work very hard. And in closing, I just want you to know that I've paid the pet tax for my thirteen-year-old Labrador Retriever, Amber, and that she's legally guarding my house from the comfort of her couch. Thank you.
Charles Tuck, followed by Carol Anne Luter.
Charles Tuck, Livingston's District, Spotsylvania County. I want to commend the Board of Supervisors for their new initiative, which is on the handout tonight. The $500,000 out of the general fund for Pay for Performance Pilot Program. Sounds to me like a great idea. Federal government does that. I was on the Pay for Performance and I don't see why county government shouldn't be on the Pay for Performance, but we'll see how it works. The word, key word there, pilot, and hope it's satisfactory and we get some efficiencies and increased productivity from that kind of arrangement. And if it is successful and passes all evaluation, maybe the school board could consider looking at Pay for Performance rather than the standard step increase. Another individual tonight raised a point that escaped me and I must admit, it's, I think, a pretty valid point because we're talking about whether or not Spotsylvania citizens step up and are willing to pay a greater tax to fully fund the school budget or other needs that were presented tonight. Well, respect to the school system, voters approved a $141 million bond issue just only a few months back. I voted for it. It includes primarily buildings, structures, but also technology, transportation, school buses, and maintenance, that's the HVAC systems. Now, that's an authorization and I understand from talking to higher power that the school system will request that the Board of Supervisors issue a sum from that bond issue, issue bond issue, and will not be used for school building because that's going to be put out for a couple more years. They don't have a need yet for, pressing need for another school building, but it'll be used for the technology and transportation and HVAC systems. So, that's, and that has to be paid for by the taxpayers. So, the real estate tax doesn't tell you the whole story about revenues going to pay for helping the school system. They're going to have to, we have to pay for it through the bond issue. I voted for it, I don't object. I just want to have all the facts presented and added up because it's a little confusing to hear all this stuff about fully funding. It's like, needs are infinite and revenues are finite and no one's understood that yet. Now, the other point I want to make is, this discussion about failing schools, one speaker has talked about several schools did not pass the accreditation or, I'm sorry, exams that the state imposes, standard of learning, I think. But on the other hand, I hear how wonderful our teachers are. Now, I was on the Budget Review Committee, full disclosure, and teachers in Spotsylvania that I've met are generally very competent and are highly dedicated. So, okay, I'll make, my point is, maybe it's not just money, maybe it's something else that's required. Maybe it's the home environment. Okay, thank you very much.
Carol Anne Luter, followed by Michael Wood.
If I may, I have a presentation for the board. Good evening, I apologize to read this evening, but I just want to make sure that my points are heard and I am passionate about this and sometimes in that passion, I lose my train of thought of what I'm trying to say. My name is Carol Anne Luter and I'm a homeowner in the Berkeley District, 3902 Lancaster Ring Road. I currently am staying in the Lee Hill District to take care of my mother. I work in the Chancellor District. I shop and visit friends in the Salem, Cortland, and Battlefield Districts. I sometimes leisurely sit by the lake with friends in the Livingston District. As you can tell, I enjoy Spotsylvania County and the opportunities it presents. I come before you tonight as a citizen, as an educator, and as a parent. I have a present for you to share and I hope you take the moment to look at it because it's my photo album of my children. I am proud to share with you my children and the adults that I work with at Wilderness Elementary School. There are 760 smiling faces that you'll see on the pages. Those children are a small group of the 24,000 students that Spotsylvania County Schools serve. My children deserve our best and they have the right to expect our best. They have the right to trust that all that we give to them every day is us working together. It does take a village to raise a child. Parks and Recreation to provide athletics and teamwork. Fire and Rescue and Police to provide our safety. MICA and other shelters to provide homes or to support them when their living quarters are not. Empowerhouse to give them the belief in them and to love again. CASA to give them a voice, protection, and hope. It does take all of these. And when you walk into our schools, that is what our teachers provide, all of that. We are the ones protecting, loving, sheltering, feeding, and teaching. We need you to join with us. Our children have the right to support all of these organizations and more importantly, to fund the school budget that Dr. Baker and his team has presented. I believe they have been diligent in presenting it to you. It is transparent and it is what is needed. It focuses on what the children require. Please focus on them and fully fund our budget. Our staff members give their all and more, but we need more resources to appropriately give our children to what they need to be college and career-ready. Every year, I feel we have to come and beg and plead for support. I just don't understand why. I am a very positive person by nature, but when I sit here and hear all the people, they do not have the same passion that I do of all of our children. That's right, all of our children. No matter what their economic status is, no matter the color of their skin, no matter their birth origin or the language they speak, they deserve all of us working together. Please fund the budget.
Good evening, Michael Wood. Live on Block House Road in the Berkeley District. And I just want to say, thank you for increasing the local level of school funding every year in recent years despite our economic environment. A number of residents have spoken on school funding tonight and as a paraeducator at Spotsy Middle and son of a special education teacher who has taught in the county for over twenty years, I recognize the importance of supporting education. You, as a board, have continually supported education and have been put into a tough position by the state who has not returned education funding to the levels prior to the market crash bought on by federal government inflating housing bubble. I would encourage the board and the citizens of Spotsylvania to bring the same passion shown tonight for education and direct it to the representatives in Richmond to appropriately prioritize the budget so you, the board, are not put into a lose-lose position of choosing to raise taxes or underfund priorities. Thank you again for your service and support of education in Spotsylvania County. In closing, I again hope the passion concerning education funding here tonight is directed at the appropriate level of government. Thank you.
That is the final citizen signed up to speak.
Sorry, just sitting back listening. Anybody here who didn't speak, wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, address, and you will also have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Audrey Gardner and I'm in the Cortland District and I've been in my house for twenty-one years. I taught years ago, I had forty-two children in my class and I sincerely doubt that any of them felt neglected. At that time, we were allowed to touch a child and they got lots of hugs. And the one child that I remember quite distinctly had a little problem walking. His toes went in and I took him in the hall and I said, "Put your feet on the tiles and make your feet follow those tiles." I saw him as a near adult many years later. The child's feet were straight. Now, I'm not saying I did the miraculous job of getting the feet straight, but at least I worked on it. So, you can give attention to children in a very small way and it makes an impact. I feel that we do not have a financial problem, we have a moral problem. And if your morals are skewed, then your finances are going to go right behind it. So, get your morals straight, get your family straight, get your adults straight so that children can learn from parents and not just teachers. Now, that's hard for a teacher to understand and it's hard for a teacher to raise a parent, but it's not the board's job to be the parent. It's not the teacher's job to be the parent and it's hard not to be a parent when you are a teacher. I have experienced that and I appreciate what the board is doing, but I think you need to know, your job, and your job is not a parent, and a teacher's job is not a parent. And we need to know what our job is and we need to be responsible for the job we have. That's a hard thing to get across to parents who are not being parents, but somehow or another, we as a society need to work on parents being parents. Thank you very much for doing your job as a board member and I hope you're doing a good job as a parent as well.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Jeff Foster, in the Lee Hill District. Have a thirteen-year-old son who's a strong, vibrant young eighth grader at Post Oak Middle School and my wife is an administrator at the school as well. I don't have a list, I don't have a long agenda, I don't have a long diatribe to read to you this evening. I just ask that you dig deep and please go ahead and fund Dr. Baker's budget in its entirety. I've been on this planet for about forty-five years, served over half of that in the Marine Corps. Hopefully, I've got another forty-five left and I'd like to think that some of these children that we're educating today are going to be in a position to make the decisions that are going to help me later in life and future generations. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Anybody else who has not spoken, wish to speak? Seeing nobody rise, close that public hearing and then I'll open the next one. We have three, by the way, this evening. It's the tax rate. Open that one and anybody signed up for that one? Amy?
No, sir.
Anyone here who has not spoke on the tax rate part of the public hearing, wish to speak? Seeing no one rise, I'll close that one and then open the last one, which is the Capital Improvement Plan for FY 2016 to 2020. Anybody here wish to speak on that issue? You sure? Okay, seeing nobody rise, I'll declare that public hearing closed. Meeting adjourned.
Unless there's any board members maybe want to make a brief comment, then we could...
Does anybody like to make a brief comment?
The only two things that I would like to say is, number one, I appreciate everybody coming out this evening and sticking with us and this is a great opportunity for you to come in and voice your opinion. Two things, though, that do need correcting is, number one, we are not the third lowest jurisdiction in the state for starting salaries. We actually beat Stafford and I like to say that over and over, we beat Stafford with our starting salaries and we do a good job with that. So, we're not at the bottom at all. And then the second thing is, last year, we did, the board did fully fund the school board requested budget. So, that is something that we strive to do and when we can do it, we do it and because I know, speaking for myself, I won't speak for the rest of the board, but I would assume that they would agree with the sentiment, that they support our schoolteachers, our administrators, and our school system. And we do all that we can to make that pie stretch as far as we can. So, seeing no other comments from the board, motion to adjourn. We voted unanimously. Thank you very much.